Good evening. I'm happy to welcome my fellow board members and the public and call the October 12th, 2021 School Board meeting to order. This is a business meeting of the board held in the public. As such, the board is authorized to adopt rules or policies to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum in a public meeting. Please note that your presence here is subject to those rules and policies. Pursuant to Florida Statute 877.13, it is unlawful and a misdemeanor of the second degree, punishable by up to 60 days in jail and a $500 fine for any person knowingly to disrupt or interfere with the lawful administration or functions of any educational institution or school board, or knowingly to advise, counsel, or instruct any school pupil or school employee to disrupt any school or school board function or activity on school board property. To facilitate a cooperative environment for all, please be aware of the following. Per our emergency policy, masks are currently required while indoors on school district property unless social distancing of six feet can be maintained or a verified medical exemption has been provided. If you must, if you must leave the building for any reason, you will not be permitted to reenter. The appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is as an observer. I will ask persons deemed to be knowingly or intentionally disrupting this meeting of the school board of Brevard County or not complying with policy to stop or leave. If persons receiving the warning choose not to follow my instructions, I will instruct Brevard County Sheriff's deputies to take any law enforcement action they deem appropriate, and you may be escorted, detained, or arrested depending on the conduct. Persons who refuse to depart after a warning may also be committing the crime of trespassing in accordance with Florida Statute Section 810.08. These statutes apply to conduct on all school board property which includes this boardroom as well as the outside of this building to the sidewalks. If you continue to cause a disruption, you are advised that you are in violation of Florida State Statute 877.13, or if you fail to leave the premises after being warned by the sheriff's office, you are committing trespass and the board has authorized the sheriff's office to enforce these rules. In the event multiple individuals fail to adhere to these expectations and board business cannot continue due to disruption, I will call a recess and request that the law enforcement officers present clear the boardroom of attendees. When the room is cleared, the board will return and resume their meeting with no public present. Those who are signed up to speak will be seated under the front entry area and called in when it's your time to speak. Ms. Escobar, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection in memory of a BPS family member who recently passed away. Janice Cowing, guidance clerk at Westshore Junior Senior High. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical and the spiritual for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community who would like to start us off this evening.
I don't want to start off. I just have a quick little shout out actually to my five-year-old daughter Olive. We had a really sweet moment in our house recently. Every time you would ask her what she wants to be when she grows up, she started off as a mermaid, an artist, and then a singer. And just the other day when we were having dinner, my husband said, "Olive, do you still want to be a singer?" And she said, "No, actually, I want to be a substitute teacher." And it was just so adorable because she's had a couple of, couple of days recently where she had a substitute teacher and we asked her, "Well, why? Why do you want to be a substitute teacher?" And she said, "Well, somebody has to be there when the teacher's not there." And I thought, "Man, you're so wise at five years old." And so I just want to shout out, shout out to sweet little Olive, but I just want to do a shout out, of course, to our substitutes that we rely on so heavily, not only in the midst of COVID, but just overall when our staff can't be there for our kiddos. You are so important and you do impact them clearly very, very much. So, so thank you and anyone ever considering it, please think about the impact that you're making even on our littlest ones. Thanks.
Thanks. Campbell?
So I want to highlight the automotive program at Heritage High School tonight. Some of you may have seen in our recent newsletter, this, our high school senior, Leila Pope, who was recognized in September as a student of the month for tomorrow's tech. And she actually is one of our student interns in the, this summer and then ongoing this semester, I believe, through the BPS transportation department. So that was exciting, but then I found out since then that Heritage is actually putting forward the first ever all-girl team, competing in the Universal Technical Institute's annual top tech challenge in January. So that's exciting. And in addition to that, the antique automotive, oh, sorry, the Antique Automobile Club of Cape Canaveral, recognized their instructor, Michael Browde, and Heritage High School for their outstanding support of the Tools to Build a Life program from the years 2012 to 2021. They've had one or two students every, for 12 years receive scholarships from that program. So very proud of the Heritage Automotive Program and all the good things that they're putting forward.
Awesome. Thanks, Ms. Campbell. I'm good.
Couple of things that are on the agenda this evening that are absolutely amazing is our food and, you know, I mean, our food, our food teams under the leadership of Kevin Thornton has gone through this COVID pandemic with some of the hardest hit areas between individuals working to supplies and everything else. And I just wanted to give a shout out. I see it on here, the grant that we were going for, for the fresh fruit and vegetable program. But one of the things that occurred the other day, which was I have a teacher at Sable Elementary and a lot of times people don't understand that teachers try to do things outside the box that just also adds to their, what they do every day. And I didn't ask her if I could say her name, so I'm not going to say it, but she started building vegetable programs for all of the students that were there. And I called Kevin and I said, "Hey, man, she's doing this thing. Let's, let's put the fresh fruits and vegetables team behind her. Let's start growing some of the vegetables inside of her garden. Let's go..." And all of a sudden she starts sending me pictures and it wasn't just like some little vegetable garden. She's got like six of them and she's just growing it. Like she's creating an entire agricultural center there. So it's just really cool that some of our teachers are out there pushing it. Also that our food services team under Kevin Thornton's been so amazing over the last couple of years. And I wanted to give him a shout out and the individuals that are involved in that. The other thing that's near and dear to my heart, not many people know this, but I was a poli sci and history major in college and my political science was based on state and some other, some other parts, but my history was focused on civil rights. And my, my civil rights portion of it was literally I wrote a 50-page thesis on Harry T. Moore before I ever moved to Brevard County. And that Harry T. Moore paper was written and it's, I always stayed in touch with the author of Ben Green over the, the book and I, and some of the individuals from here. And then what ended up happening is, is, you know, a couple of decades later, I end up in a situation where, or actually a decade later, I was a teacher and I oversaw all of the actual field trips for the Harry T. Moore Center when we used to send kids to the center all across the county. And then what I ended up doing is now I can be a part of as a school board member to support this great initiative. And what we have tonight is honoring somebody that was inside of our community that fought for what they believed in and ultimately lost his life and his family lost their lives too. And we need to cherish that and be a part of that struggle. So I wanted to give a shout out to this entire team that's been working on this to include the teachers' union, Dr. Sullivan's staff, Dr. Klein, everybody. Just, you know, really appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Well, that's a, a great lead in to what I'd like to share, some rather hot off the presses. Mr. Dalen Smith, a 2021 graduate of Rockledge High School, was named the inaugural recipient of a $3,500 scholarship in the name of, or as a memorial to Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore. If you remember, their, this scholarship was a joint effort, a partnership with the American Federation of Teachers, the Florida Education Association, Brevard Association of School Administrators, Senator Tony Hill, Chair of the Commissioner of Edu-, Chair of the Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force, and our Brevard Federation of Teachers. And Mr. Sims is an impressive young man. I wish I had his picture up to show you. But I'd like to take a moment and share just an excerpt from his essay that he submitted in the, in the scholarship. He wrote, "Like the Moores, I want to be known as a young man that motivated my people, got involved, took a stand for his generation, and formed as a team for change and equality. We have to understand that we are the world's Moores, Dr. King, Malcolm X, John Lewis, and Barack Obama, just a name of few. I want to lead, educate, motivate, and be of encouragement for all races." So congratulations to Dalen Sims on receiving that impressive scholarship and certainly representing well the inauguration of the Harriet T. Moore, Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Memorial Scholarship.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I just have one quick one tonight and it's, it's interesting and it overlaps my multiple hats. And Ms. Campbell, I probably should have checked with you before doing this because it falls in your area, but want to give a shout out to two of our swimmers from Heritage. I don't know if you guys saw the article. And I apologize if I mispronounced one of the names, but Cheyenne Davis and Jen Fararoni, swimmers for Heritage High School, were in the pool doing their warmups, getting, getting ready for their practice, I guess. One of their teammates started having some sort of medical issue. Lifeguard blew the whistle. Our two swimmers together lifted this student up above the water and got them to the edge to safety so they could receive care from EMS. So kudos to them for not only, you know, personally challenging themselves to be successful in that realm, but for being aware enough to recognize because, you know, drowning is silent. And there have certainly been a lot of instances where we have had even very good swimmers who have lost their lives in the water. And so the fact that they were paying enough attention to realize that this individual was in need of assistance and ready and willing to work together to get that person to safety so they could get the, resist, the support that they needed. Just kudos both to them for their leadership. Okay, that is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford, a member of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have the administrative staff recommendations, one proclamation, one resolution, two presentations, 17 consent items, two action items, four information items, and four discussion items. Changes made to the agenda since it was first released to the public on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021 are as follows. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F17 on instructional staff recommendations, receive revisions. Item C8 on FSBA resolution, item F14 on student expulsions, H33 on board policy, 0169 dot 1, public participation at board meetings, and H35 on board policy, 5112 entrance requirements are additions. An attachment was added to the ESSER update and plan community feedback presentation. Four board discussion items were added, teacher safety, report from FSBA Board of Directors meeting, Board of Education decision on mask policy, and volunteer school access.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDou- Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Dr. Mullen, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, there are seven individuals for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Dr. Mullen?
I would love to take this opportunity to congratulate our newly appointed assistant principals on tonight's agenda. They are joining the administrative ranks tomorrow. So sleep well tonight. You're going to work even harder starting tomorrow. But congratulations to Jackson Middle School's Assistant Principal Danielle Polley, Jefferson Middle School's Assistant Principal Michael Williamson, Madison Middle School's Assistant Principal Jerry Hanson, and Pinewood Elementary School's Assistant Principal, Ms. Amber Smith. So congratulations to our new administrators. And we also want to thank in advance the significant other spouses in our administrators' lives who support them to do the great work that they've committed to, to serve the children of their respective communities.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Mullen. Would you please now let us know about the resolutions and proclamations on tonight's agenda, sir?
Madam Chair, first, you'll be asked to adopt the FSBA resolution to ensure, um, to ensure views are heard and exchanged in a safe environment. Russ Brun's Chief Strategic Communications Officer will read the resolution. Mr. Brun?
Whereas the Florida School Board-
Hold on one second, Mr. Brun. I don't think you have my, try again.
Start over. Whereas the Florida School Boards Association is a nonpartisan body, which represents 346 school board members, and whereas public education is essential to an informed citizenry, the foundation of our democratic society, and whereas public schools are the cornerstone of each community, bringing together adults and children, educators, volunteers, business leaders, community groups, and elected officials in a common enterprise, and whereas a commitment to First Amendment rights of all citizens is guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution and integral to the spirit of Florida's open meeting laws, and whereas Florida's school boards both encourage and welcome parents, as well as other concerned citizens, to engage in lively, respectful, and civil, civic discourse at school board meetings, and whereas the FSBA affirms that the safety of all school board members and citizens who attend the school board meetings is of the utmost, utmost importance, and whereas the FSBA is concerned about alarming incidents and comments if they extend beyond civil, civic discourse, and whereas illegal acts cannot be tolerated, and whereas Florida's school board members maintain full confidence and, and appreciate our partnerships with local and state law enforcement agencies to effectively address issues of public safety if they arise. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Directors of the Florida School Boards Association calls upon all school districts to collaborate with their respective local law enforcement agencies to continue to provide a safe environment for all stakeholders to exchange views, thereby ensuring parents' voices are heard when it comes to decisions about their safety, when it comes to decisions about their children's education and safety.
Thank you, Mr. Brun. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell, your motion, would you like to discuss?
Yes, I would. So the resolution that we have before us is, was born of a conversation that we had last week at the Florida School Board Association Board of Directors meeting. Mr. Susan and I were there last week. I am your representative from our district, and Mr. Susan is the, is the chairman of a committee, so he was there as well. I just wanted to share with you kind of where this came from and the conversation, some of the conversation that we had last week. We had a lot of conversation over two days on this. So the National School Board Association, which Florida School Board Association is a part of, sent out a letter on September the 29th, addressing issues that school boards are having all across the nation with disruptions and violence and such, and sent it to the President of the United States. And it stirred up a lot of conflict, even in our own community. I've heard people talk about it. And it wasn't, just a few days later, we got a letter from the Department of Justice, and that further aggravated the situation. So one of the things that was brought out, we are fortunate here in Florida to have two school board members from our association, Florida School Board Association, that are represented on the Board of Directors for the National School Board Association. One of them is Bev Slough from St. Johns County. She represents, I think, 11 states across the South. And then Dr. Steve Gallin from Miami Dade. He is the chairman of Qube, which is the Council for Urban Boards of Education, I think. And so we have two representatives, and they were both there at the meeting last week. And one of the problems from that is that, that came from that, is that that letter was sent out by the executive director, the interim executive director of the National School Board Association, without ever coming to their Board of Directors. And so, you know, it's interesting, because we had a room full of people from all across our state there, from all different kinds of political persuasions, but it was unanimous that we needed to respond. And one of the things, kind of going behind the scenes, is that the NSBA has just really been practicing some pretty bad governance, and our, our state's association did not pay their dues when they usually would in the summertime. And a part of the letter that, that we worked on together collaboratively, all 30-something of us last week, was saying that we're going to continue not to pay dues until some of these issues are handled. And one of them is sending out a letter that represents the association of all these states without passing it through any kind of approval process. And so, part of what we did, so a couple of the main issues that we talked about that were coming up, regardless of where you fall on a political spectrum, is that, one, the national organization is, like I said, is really practicing bad governance and accountability, lack of transparency, and because, and this is just an example of it, because it was sent without the approval of their board. We also talked about how, you know, the NSBA is supposed to champion local control, and our state association champions local control, and asking the federal government to step in becomes a problem, especially when we have built good relationships, each county, with our local law enforcement agencies, who we believe are handling things, and we need to continue to build that relationship and for them to handle the things as they come up. There was a lot, because we have experienced in our own county, against some of our own members here, some really atrocious behavior, and that's saying lightly. We also, in that same room, were people who have been threatened, their houses to be burned down, another school board member who someone came up to and said, I found out you live in, in, you know, an ungated community. I mean, there's really some scary things are going on, not only in our state, but all across the nation. And so we wanted it to be recognized, that these are, these are definitely, this is bad behavior, and it should, you know, it's not behavior that people shouldn't be engaged in. We need those law enforcement partners, so we wanted to recognize that, definitely not downplay that. But the tone of the letter sent by NSBA was one that really seems like they were speaking with our voices and saying something that would discourage public participation, and that is not where we are. As hard as it is sometimes for people to listen to other people's views, we recognize that the part, the part that this plays in our, in our democratic situation that we're in, even has a school board situ-, uh, school board. And so the letter, I sent it to you guys last night. It's available to the public if they'd like to look at it. I think there was a press release that went along with it. And then along with that, the, while we were there, there was the talk of a resolution that also was released last night, and I sent that to you as well, and that is the resolution that Mr. Brun just read. Just again, reiterating all the sides of this, that we recognize bad behavior, but we also recognize our local partners and law enforcement, but we also recognize the importance of participation and all of the things, bringing all these points of view together, and, and what it's going to take to ensure civil, civic discourse. That was the theme really for that conversation last week, and it's the theme of this resolution. And so that's why I hope that, you know, this is just our school board kind of signing off on this resolution, saying we, we agree, we affirm. It's already been put out by the, by the Board of Directors for FSBA, but just that we affirm as a, as the Board of Brevard County that we agree to this, and we want to encourage that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
So in a short, National School Board Association has been making decisions going back the last six months without following the two individuals or asking for our state's participation in them. The membership was pulled back, our dues were pulled back, and across, and we were in that point, and then all of a sudden, this National School Board Association letter goes out. And that's, the, the first piece is, is we wanted to pull back from that organization because of the way they were behaving, separate from the resolution, separate. So like that is actions by a director that was not following proper process and everything else. He just decided to do it, and there were very opportunities to call emergency meetings, to discuss via Zoom, anything, and this is consistent with other actions that were going. Separate from the resolution, completely separate. Actions taken by an executive member, I can't say it enough, separate. Other side is, is the resolution, which is a kumbaya for us to say, hey, we appreciate all the parents. We appreciate very good discourse. We appreciate your opportunity to speak to us, but we also need to protect when people are doing things that aren't appropriate, like we've seen either in our county or in other places. So if that helps, do it in two minutes. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Is there any additional discussion on the resolution?
Yeah.
Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you. So this was brought up at a workshop this morning, kind of at the end of it, and I admitted I hadn't yet seen the email, and I did review it since then. And I'm just, I'm struggling because I feel like this is being done in haste, and I believe we are putting ourselves in the middle of two organizations that are clearly disagreeing with each other. This was released last night. It was emailed to us last night. And, you know, every question I ask myself is, how does this directly benefit the students and staff of our public schools? And I'm struggling with being able to answer that question. I think we're getting involved in something that we don't need to be involved in, and I'm not comfortable being involved in, and I don't really see the direct benefit of this document.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Any additional discussion?
If I could, I was just to come around the questions. I understand your concerns about the timing, because we always like to have more prep. I, as far as the benefit to the students and staff, if you look at the resolution in particular, we talk about the importance of community input. Now, obviously, you know, that is going, when our community has input, when they have a safe way of doing it, that's going to benefit our students and staff, because we want to make those connections. Also, safety in the meetings, as mentioned, and we frequently have students here in the meetings, and personally, I hate when we get to the point where people are really out of control and using ugly language, because we have children in our audience, and I, that's, you know, this is, that directly affects those individual students, as well as anyone who would be watching from home. And setting the tone as leaders for how we want things to operate. And so I think it is important for us to recognize these things, whether it's through the resolution, and if we don't have a resolution, we still, these things, still things are important to me personally, to our organization, so. And where it comes, we are members of our associations. We are members of the National School Board Association, and so our voice in that is important, just as our public's voice is to us, our voice should be important to those organizations. And that's why you have me as a representative on our FSBA Board of Directors, and that's why we have representatives on the National Board of Directors, because that is our voice. And so I, that may, may or may not resolve those issues for you, but I did want to be able to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any additional, Mr. Susan?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. How does it benefit our students and how does it benefit our staff? By leading by example. When we have a national organization that says that we need to do something that basically, and quoting Mr. Gallum from Miami Dade, set fire to the entire state of Florida, making each one of our school districts more difficult to manage, because now all of a sudden, people that are out there that are in the community feel like they're being investigated. And I will tell you that in this district, we have a certain group of people that come in and protest and do it that way, and in other districts, the other side of the aisle is doing the same to other school districts. So it doesn't matter which group comes in, they have the right to be in there, they have the right to speak, they have the right to do all those things. And what ended up happening is, is that this put that into jeopardy. Those weren't even my words. That wasn't Ms. Campbell's words. That was the majority of the Board of Directors that was bipartisan. So that was the first piece. We, as a school board, have to lead by example. When you are going to do something that is going to threaten us, then we need to respond. The other piece is, is how does it help students and staff to do the resolution? This is us. Ms. Jenkins, this is about, about you, about us, coming together and doing the right thing, to say that we are together and that we are not going to take certain types of protests, but we will listen to our constituents that come in here every day, and they give speeches, and they do the right thing, regardless of if we believe in them or not, that's how it is. And that's what this is. I hope that helps you when I say it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I want to respond to that.
Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you. I am definitely struggling, because, again, the, the timing of this is, is frustrating for me, because everything in my gut tells me that this response by the Florida School Board Association, although I agree with pretty much everything that's in here, it's just the reason why this was put out is what I'm uncomfortable with, because it was drafted in response to a letter that intended to keep me and my family safe, and potentially you and your family safe, and potentially other school board members and teachers across the nation safe. And, you know, let's just be perfectly blunt and honest here, of all the people sitting up on this dais that should be directly moved by a document like this, it's probably me. And I appreciate you saying that we need to set the tone and, and lead by example, but I, I probably would have acknowledged, would have appreciated that acknowledgement six months ago, when, when I started dealing with this stuff, because in spite of what people believe, I am not opposed to people practicing their First Amendment rights, even when it's outside of my home on a, on a public property. I'm not, I'm not. I think it's a silly method. I think it's ineffective. It doesn't move me or motivate me in any way, but I'm not opposed to it. What I reject is this effort to create fear and division in the community that leads to credible threats of violence against me and my family, and there's a lot of things that I haven't shared with all of you up here. I've tried not to talk about this stuff publicly, and when you guys brought this up today in the workshop, I felt, I felt off guard and frustrated, because then it became something on our agenda that I couldn't express to you why I was against it any longer, because now it has to be in the sunshine. I don't reject people coming here and speaking their voice. They, they do it all the time. We, we don't, we don't stop them from doing that. I don't reject them standing outside my home. I reject them following me around in a car, following my car around. I reject them saying that they're coming for me, that they're, that I need to beg for mercy. I reject that when they are using their First Amendment rights on public property, they're also going behind my home and brandishing their weapons to my neighbors, that they're making false DCF claims against me, to my daughter, that I have to take a DCF investigator to her playdate to go underneath her clothing and check for burn marks. That's what I'm against, which is, which is a credible threat and calculated. And I appreciate the idea of us coming together and standing up for one another and supporting a resolution to support one another in face of those threats. I don't believe that's what this is, though. I believe this is one organization responding to another, and if we really felt that way and we were going to support each other and really try to make a change with- and we were going to support each other and really try to make a change within our community and let our parents come who speak on both sides of the aisle know that we're here to support them speaking, and we want to hear them, then, then we should come up with something for ourselves that meets the situation that we face here in Brevard, but doesn't interject us in between two organizations fighting for each other. And again, I, I didn't want to have this conversation, I didn't want to. I spoke to Dr. Mullins, I said, I don't want to talk about this. I've tried spurts for months to not talk about this. Almost exactly six months ago is when this attack, to me personally, has started, and it hasn't ended. And it's frustrating. And it's frustrating as an individual, again, as the only individual up here who has been impacted by these things that are within this resolution, to have to get it in an email last night and have this conversation publicly, rather than us kind of just having a genuine conversation about it beforehand. And I, Ms. Campbell, I appreciate you, I truly believe why you're bringing this forward, but I have to be truthful, I have to be honest to where I stand on this, because as a person who has been impacted by some of these threats, it makes me feel like I am making a statement against the letter that would support the safety of my family, and I'm just, I'm not comfortable with it. Thank you.
So, Board members, per our Roberts rules, I think everyone who wishes to speak has spoken twice on the issue. I will simply say thank you for the open dialogue, Ms. Jenkins. I think we can all appreciate where you are in the situation, and thank you for your openness and honesty in the challenges that you and your family have been facing. Is there, Ms. McDowell, you have not spoken, I just want to make sure you have an opportunity. So then we'll go ahead and call the question board members if you would please vote. And the motion passes four to one. Dr. Mullins?
Tonight, you will be asked to approve the Keeping the Lights On After School Proclamation. Mr. Brune will present it to the board.
Whereas Brevard Public Schools, through our Brevard Before and After School Program, stands firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities, because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after their regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, after-school programs have risen to the moment to support youth and are critical supports to help youth recover from this challenging time and address their academic, social, and emotional needs, after-school programs provide engaging, hands-on learning and opportunities to connect with caring adults and peers. Today, programs are supporting young people and families as they navigate their return to school and continue to innovate to meet ever-changing needs. Whereas Brevard Public Schools, through our Brevard Before and After School Program, has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 28, 2021, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. Whereas more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 7.7 million children have no place to go after school. Whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. Therefore, it be resolved that Brevard Public Schools urges the citizens of Brevard County to ensure that every child has access to a safe, engaging place where the lights are on after school, and it be fully resolved that this school board chair and board enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School and is committed to innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure that the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
Thank you, Mr. Brune. What are the wishes of the board?
No, to Brune.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion?
I'm on the wrong resolution.
I got you there.
No. Oui, hang on, I had to refresh.
And the motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins, let's move on to the presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've asked Dr. Sullivan, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leading and Learning, to provide us with an update on the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, or ESER. Dr. Sullivan, I'm sure you'll take a moment to introduce your great team that is here with you this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Mullins, thank you so much for this opportunity to provide an update to not only our board, but our community about the status of our federal funds in regards to improving academic outcomes and opportunities for our students in Brevard. I first have to say that I am very fortunate to have assembled the dream team. We were a tiny team of one and two for a very long time with ESER, but now I'm able to introduce the rest of the leadership team to the board and to the community. First, would like to introduce Mr. Frank Stockman. Mr. Stockman is the Assistant Director in Leading and Learning for Grants, and so he's a key member of not only the ESER team, but all of the other grants that Brevard Public Schools brings into the county to support students. Like to introduce Stephanie Anderson. Stephanie Anderson is the Grant Coordinator for all the ESER grants, and that is quite a job. We were fortunate to steal her from our friends in finance. She comes to us with a very strong financial background, particularly in government work and accountability, and we're really pleased to have her on the team. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Lori Reinhart. Mrs. Lori Reinhart is our Teacher on Assignment for Community Partnerships. You're going to hear a lot tonight about the work that Lori is doing with our community to bring in a lot of community feedback. We have three other folks that are the quiet heroes, even though they're not here tonight, I want to introduce Ms. Marlene Taylor, she's one of our administrative technicians. She was the first member and only member of the ESER team for a long time. She entered every single financial transaction for ESER I, for not only VPS, but for our charter schools and our private schools as well. Recently joining the team is Tawanda Hall, that name may sound familiar, she is a retiree that we talked back into the system to join our Grants team and really gear up primarily in supporting our charter schools, as we help them utilize the resources available to them as well. And Miki Mitchell is our new accounting specialist, and Ms. Lizinski, I'm sure, is staring daggers at me, because we took her from our finance team as well, and she'll be working very closely with Stephanie and our finance partners on accountability and ensuring all of our transactions are handled well. And so as you can see on this elementary slide, on this slide, we are focusing on the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. For our community that hasn't been immersed, these are three separate funds by three different congressional acts. The first one, people got pretty familiar hearing about, was from the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, that was the first act that was passed to impact school, as well as several other agencies. As part of the CARES Act, ESER I, as we now fondly called, was passed. The second one is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, I call it CHRISA, other people call it SIRSIA. As a teacher, I'm going to claim CHRISA is correct, and that is the second act that was passed this past December to add additional support, and the ESER funds there are fondly known as ESER II. The third significant act that was passed from Congress is the American Rescue Plan, you're hearing about that a lot right now, and yes, you think they call it ESER III, but no, it's ARPESER, because that would have been too simple for us all. I'd like to point out to the members of the board and the entire audience, the email at the bottom of the screen, bpseser@brevardschools.org, and that email goes to Lori Reinhart, and she directly answers every single email that comes to her, she has cards with her as well, and we are very excited to engage our community in the work in planning ESER, This first slide is a quick overview from the federal government, identifies their intent in the use of the federal funds, some specific guidelines and how to use it. I want to point out a couple of things on this slide. The image to the right is an excellent little comparison of ESER I, ESER II, and ARPESER, and if, for our members or anybody of the board, if you click on that, it's going to take you to the entire document. Really terrific overview of all three federal plans. At the bottom left, you'll see a USDOE May 2021 link. That site has a document that has really clear guidelines on how ESER should be spent, and really what was most exciting for us is that it is full of some interesting ideas that we previously hadn't thought about in Brevard County. And so you'll see us refer to both these documents throughout, and again, we want it to be super transparent for our community, to be able to click on it and learn a little bit more as well. So just a quick overview of ESER I. ESER I was the first grant to Brevard, it was just over $17 million, and part of that, those went to charter schools, as well as private schools in Brevard County. ESER I is the only one of the three grants that included our non-publics, our private schools in Brevard. The state is directly working with those schools for ESER II and ARPESER in a way outside of the ESER funding. What you'll see here is just a overview, not a line item, the line item is in my hand and lots of pages, of where ESER I funds were spent. You'll see an amount for PPE, summer school staffing, technology, academic support was a significant amount of our funds, that included tutoring before school, after school, and Saturdays, some of our progress monitoring tools, online access, some additional staff for COVID response, including our strike team, some additional resources for our technology support personnel, individual student computers, and then you'll see the rest of that allocation. At this time, those funds are expended. We are sitting on a balance of about $115,000, and those are actually charter school dollars. So we are still working with our charter school partners to reach out again, remind them these dollars are available for them, and support our charter schools in utilizing the rest of those funds. And so that's a quick overview of ESER I. ESER II has been an interesting odyssey, we've spoken at this board several times about ESER II, and so I'm just going to try to briefly recap for our audience that maybe hadn't participated. The ESER II grant was put into four different grant applications by the state, and through legislative actions that occurred in the last legislative session. Fortunately for Brevard Public Schools, quite frankly, it was directly aligned with the work we were looking to do anyway. We knew there were set-asides, and we had planned accordingly. And so I am pleased to say we didn't have to derail any of our intentions as a result of some of those changes. In academic acceleration, the state identified for Brevard Public Schools, and just as a reminder, that does include charter, that does not include non-public for the rest of this discussion, just over $12 million in non-enrollment assistance, $2.5 million, technology, just over $3 million, and what is technically called lump sum, and that is indeed the correct terminology for the fourth grant, and that is the balance of the funds identified by the federal government for the students in Brevard. Just as a point of clarification as we move forward, charter school distribution is approximately 10%, and so we do distribute those funds based on per pupil allocation, and indirect costs are just shy of 5% as of today, sometimes the indirect costs change. And so the academic acceleration guidelines you'll see here, some of the points in the legislation. It is focusing, of course, on using student data to measure academic progress. This board knows, we have been progress monitoring data people, I don't know if that made sense, for many, many years, and so we certainly support the state's push for progress monitoring and its expectation on pre and post data. We had tools in place, this was a really easy thing for us to meet in Brevard. We had to document evidence-based instructional methods, again, this was not a challenge. We use our variety of databases for evidence-based resources before we implement them. A really interesting focus on multi-tiered systems of support, and of course, providing more information to parents. And those were the guidelines in the academic acceleration application. I am pleased to say that our application was fully approved and fully funded, I'm pretty sure we were one of the very first districts to be approved and fully funded, because we got our application in quite early. And if you take a look at this slide, again, this is a brief overview of the categories on where those fundings were. We put direct funds into summer school. You guys may remember that we actually provided transportation to all our schools for summer school for all students, we were pleased to partner with our transportation department to do that. We put funds, of course, into additional pre-planning time for our teachers. We did elementary teachers this past summer, and we'll be doing secondary teachers next summer. I skipped over the extra hour of school day, we're really excited about that. As the board is aware, we've been running an extra hour of school day at Endeavor for a couple of years, added MIMS, and now, due to ESER, we were able to fund that additional time and services into five elementary schools. Lots of digital software, mentioning everything from Read 180 to iReady, and those tools that are really important in our schools. And we were able to allocate additional personnel at high-need priority schools. For example, in our elementary schools, we averaged between one and two specialized interventionists in the 10 most fragile schools based on data. In our secondary schools that were priority schools, we amplified resources primarily in guidance services, knowing, of course, a lot of those needs for our students, so we added guidance counselors, social workers, and guidance service professionals. We also added instructional coaches, where there were not instructional coaches in place, primarily for our priority schools. So the second part of ESER II was the non-enrollment assistance, and it was interesting, this was an unusual one. This was a little puzzling at first, because we had done a lot of work in tracking individual students. You've probably seen emails from parents who did not appreciate our relentless tracking efforts, but our teams have done really great work. When we really boiled it down, I want to give Chris Moore and her team credit for identifying every single student that met either of the two criteria, and that was primarily students who did not re-enroll into the school district, and those that may have enrolled, but due to really extreme and excessive absences, were not present on both FTE. So we identified each and every one of those children, and then put together a plan that involved regional social workers and parent liaisons. Really excited about that. For those that are watching, we still have lots of those vacancies, so hopefully you can go online and consider joining the team. This is about a $2 million bucket, and you can see we added nurse liaisons as well, because perhaps medical needs and support was a barrier to a student attending school, and then, as mentioned before, social workers and parent liaisons. We are right in the middle of all those positions are advertised, and we're attempting to fill them. A point of clarification, I know there's sometimes questions about the percentage of funds used. In this case, it's primarily personnel, and so that means at this time of the year, we would have only encumbered a couple months of pay. In this case, we actually just released the funds, and so there's very little, but even when we hire them all, we're still not going to see a full encumbrance until the end of the school year, as until the end of the school year as we pay out salaries. So when we're looking at percentage expended, it's important just to note that when it is salary, it's not necessarily going to be realized at the early stages of the grant. The third category, this was the easy one. I had to go to Russell Cheatham and say, "Give us the next set of priorities on your technology plan." As you guys know, Mr. Cheatham and his team have developed a really high-quality aggressive technology plan. And we have certainly capitalized on our ability to use ESER dollars to accelerate those. For example, this year, all of our traditional middle schools went one-to-one. And with this next allocation, we are moving on to the next set of schools. And then hopefully, with ARP-ESER as well, we'll be able to be one-to-one even sooner than the technology plan had predicted. And we put the money here in two basic buckets. One, hotspots. We know that devices are great, but connectivity makes those devices work. So we're continuing to support hotspots for our students who need connectivity. And of course, additional computers for our one-to-one initiative. This order, we know, is going to support the middle schools and our junior seniors as well as our priority high schools, and really just tacking that down one group at a time. So the final grant, this was really unusual. This was the lump sum, meaning everything else that was portioned for Brevard from the federal government that wasn't in one of those set-asides. And in this grant application, we had to identify which of the allowable expenses our priorities were in. As you can imagine, we have a wide range of priorities, about 50 separate line items. The board has seen it on multiple occasions. The public is going to find out today how they can see all those details as well. But what's interesting about this one is this grant application requires legislative approval. We turned our grant application in on August 10th. Haven't heard anything yet. We feel great about the grant application, but we haven't heard any follow-up yet to how that legislative approval is going to be. We've heard a couple of unofficial comments. But we're really optimistic that it will get released soon. Again, our items were incredibly aligned to the expectations of the grant. And just to give you some big buckets, again, the public will see how they can see every line item. But support, of course, for our staff and students. Both our Human Resources Division and our Student Services Divisions have identified ways to improve mental health resources for our staff and our students. I don't need to tell anybody in this room the toll that COVID has taken on everybody in society. Of course, lots of supplies and costs directly related to the prevention and mitigation. Lots of digital content and technology as well. So you'll find student devices also in lump sum. Direct additional support for summer school, before, after school, and tutoring. Many of our schools last year with these similar appropriations ran not only tutoring at school, but also through Zoom in the evening. Our schools are really chomping at the bit for this funding to amp up those tutoring opportunities again. And current and expanded employee positions to meet the needs of the schools and district initiatives. Dr. Mullins mentioned some of those positions earlier today, where if it weren't for ESER, we might have had to look at some serious cuts. But of course, part of the benefit of ESER is improvement to the overall economy. And, you know, one of the things that both the federal government and the state government has amplified is the need to maintain employment. And so we are fortunate to have that opportunity. And so I'm going to pause to see if there are any questions related to ESER 1 or 2 before I go into ARP-ESER.
Any board members have any questions for Dr. Sullivan? Dr. Sullivan, I'll just, just one quick one, and that is, you mentioned that the documents listed the expectations of the use of those funds back in the beginning of the presentation. Is there any difference between how the federal government allocated funds to us as far as they're, what we can use them for, when they have to be spent, when they were to be released, and what the state guidelines indicate? Is there, is that, do they mirror?
Big picture, I would say no. Big picture, the items are all aligned to the federal expectations. In terms of processing, yes. From the federal level, we did not expect to see the division of grants, the required set-asides. I think the state accommodated for that, though, because the state did allow, if you did not need that entire set-aside in that category, you simply could justify why and use it in any of the allowable expenses. Again, for us, we were doing way more than the minimum for academic acceleration, more than the minimum for non-enrollment, and more than the minimum for technology. So substantially, there was not a difference. Certainly, processing timelines, logistics. It's not necessarily what we expected, but again, we were really aligned with the intent.
Super, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to go into the great mystery, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And the reason I say it's a mystery is we have not received any information from the state whatsoever about ARP. However, there are a lot of excellent federal resources. And we felt it was really important to proceed working along the information we had. So we would be quick at the ready as soon as the state released. Very similar to how we managed ESER 1 or ESER 2, we wanted to be ready. So we have combed through everything there is to comb and have positioned the district really well to be incredibly responsive when the state releases their information. This is a significant pot of money. And some of the states throughout the country have already been utilizing these resources. The good news is, we've had the advantage of reading their plans and seeing some of those ideas and seeing how they could transfer into Brevard Public Schools. And again, there are some differences in this one. So I'm going to explain what's different about ARP-ESER from 1 and 2, and most of the changes, we think, are really positive. One of the things that's emphasized in all the documents is that it cannot replace current state and local funding. They are actually looking at, like, the base student allocation for pre-COVID and post-COVID. So there are some really strict requirements to not have this replace state funding. And the language is, in some ways, in ESER 1 and 2, but extremely explicit in ARP-ESER. So that does mean some careful work and planning. And again, I'm pulling this document again. This is the one I referenced before from May of 2021. This is really the best product out there right now. It not only identifies details regarding ARP-ESER, it revisits ESER 1 and ESER 2 and provides all kind of great ideas. I'm going to, I'm going to give an example to perk up Mr. Susan. In reading this document, we read that the federal government's recognized the importance of activities and sports in engaging students with schools. I knew I'd get a perk up there. And so we've been meeting with athletic directors, our band directors, our different programs to enhance those programs to connect more kids to schools. So this document is just full of really interesting ideas. I've linked to it like five different times so that the community, we want our community to be informed and come to us with these great ideas. And so here's a quick little comparison over the three different ESERS. One thing that I realized I did not mention was a dollar amount. And so I'll address that pretty much. The majority of our initiatives since COVID began were in CARES Act. Mentioned they were about $17 million. In ESER 2, about $60 million. And for ARP-ESER, we're anticipating around $130 million impact to Brevard Public Schools. And that includes charter schools in our community. So this is a huge impact, not only to our schools, but honestly, to the local economy. And so we're really excited about that. I'm going to talk about a couple of the big differences in ARP-ESER. But first, want to go through allowable spending. This is going to be very similar to what you've seen with ESER 1 and ESER 2. I'll give everybody an opportunity to take a peek at it. You'll see an importance of health and safety, sanitizing, cleaning materials, repairing and improving school facilities. Air quality control, I know, continues to be a topic of conversation for our community. And there's resources to do it. You'll see improving indoor quality, kind of four, four different ways there. Focus on, of course, addressing the needs from low-income families, our students with disabilities, English-language learners, minority groups, students experiencing homelessness, and foster care. The plan is expecting very explicit identification of how we are making sure we serve those students. And that is also in a lot of ESER 2. So if any of our families wanted to look at the full grant, they'll see that, that information as well. And of course, any preparedness and response. I'll let you look at the final items there. And again, no surprises, educational technology, mental health services, activities. You'll see supplemental after-school programs. Learning loss, obviously, a biggie, and other activities to maintain continuity of services, including continuing to employ existing or hiring of new LEA and school staff. And so again, I've linked to the fact sheet there for additional information. One of the big differences in ARP-ESER is there is both a maintenance of effort and a maintenance of equity requirement. And this is new to ARP-ESER. As we've worked through ESER 2, we have kept these items aligned as well. In the event we want to later move some expenses that we're covering with 2 to ARP-ESER, we wanted to make sure we're fully complying with this. And maintenance of equity is new. As you can see, some of the specific requirements there. But most importantly, is the expectation that we are maintaining financial support in teaching units and dollars at our schools in the highest quartile based on free and reduced lunch. We actually had to submit the individual school names to both the federal government and the state government. And so as we've been looking at allocating additional resources, it is truly additional resources, in particular for those schools. And so I work very closely with all the other divisions as we are identifying supports for the schools to make sure we are adding that layer of support and not replacing it. Because the intent of the federal government, as you guys know, this was a bipartisan-supported act. And we want to make sure we honor the intent of that. These were the schools that were submitted. And as you can see, we use the 1.6 multiplier. That is pretty standard. And it includes, of course, some of our charter schools as well as our local schools. So these are the schools that we will pay extra attention to make sure they are fully funded at pre-pandemic rates. And that everything that we add is additional, is additional support to those schools. And like I said, the team up here has been great. They will ask, ask, and ask, and then I check the list, and I double-check, check with my team to make sure we're not removing any layer of support in those schools. In general, we have it with any of our schools because, again, maintenance of effort and maintenance of equity are both important. The state is required to maintain their funding as well. So this is what we're really excited about and talking to you about today. Right when the federal guidelines came out with ARP, I went to Dr. Mullins. I found this one paragraph in this 60-page document about community engagement. And as you can see, the federal government is very explicit about a requirement for community engagement. I am thrilled about that because we certainly want to have as much feedback and engagement as possible. Right now, ARP-ESER is literally a blank slate. And so this is our opportunity to come together with our stakeholders, talk about what needs there are, and some exciting solutions to those needs. So as you can see, we're tasked with engaging students, families, administrators, school leaders, teachers, their unions, also any of these community groups, civil rights organizations, disability rights groups, anybody in our community interested in the well-being of our students. We want to include them in this process. Lori Reinhart, who you met earlier, that is her job. And so she has become our expert at ARP-ESER. And today is our official kickoff of the community blast-off. But she's done some preliminary meetings prior to today to start getting some information. I'm going to share with you our website and how our community can get involved in the process. So our feedback process is going to be robust. If you guys recall how we got feedback on the opening plan from anybody and everybody, this is going to be that on steroids. Lots of different surveys, lots of meetings, school advisory councils, student meetings, parent meetings, community groups, you name it, we want to do it. We will take emails to bpseser@brevardschools.org. We will take any idea from everyone. We are tracking a pretty comprehensive spreadsheet, as you can imagine, of all this data. We look forward to when we can share that with the board so that you can see graphically and easily the feedback of your constituents and help us narrow in on a plan. No idea what kind of timeline that's going to be because, again, we're ahead of the curve. We're moving forward based on federal information, knowing that that state information is coming any moment now. And so we just got started to get ahead. We will be sharing that feedback with leadership and the public. We will develop a plan on it, and then every six months, revisit it. So this is really a cycle of visit, feedback, and change. Because even little things, like my team has quickly learned, perhaps we budgeted for 10 staff members. And we get those 10 staff members, but five of those staff members don't take insurance. Well, now there's another pot of money that we can write an amendment for and reallocate. So as we learn more, as costs come in, we will continue to write amendments and work with the state to modify the plan. And so, ta-da, we're not graphic designers. As of tomorrow, in fact, probably after this meeting, if I know Mr. Brown, this website will go live on the Brevard Public Schools website. And there's a couple of things I want to point out in particular. As you can see towards the bottom of the screen, join the conversation. Ms. Reinhart will go to community meetings as well. So if there's a group, a parent group, a student group, a civic group, rotarians, parental group, all of them, they just click right there to request their own meeting. And so in addition to meetings for large groups, community engagement, surveys, and feedback, they will go out and give that community group its very own meeting for feedback. And I know a lot of you all are in lots of civic organizations. Contact us, we'll be there. And Ms. Reinhart, and typically, Mr. Stockman as well, will come out, facilitate the meeting, and get the feedback from that group. Again, I put the email there again. You're going to see some replication. It's because we want our community to be engaged. If somebody would much rather be passive, they can just send us an email with their feedback, or they can complete an online survey. Lots of different ways to get one's perspectives to us. And in the website, at the top, you'll see allowable spending. Obviously, it has to be allowable. And so this identifies those 13 items that we talked about earlier. And as much as possible, we ask for their contributor to identify which one of those allowable items they're referencing. That makes it a lot easier for us to track the huge volume of feedback that we're getting. In the next pop tab, I'm pointing like you can see what I'm pointing to, you'll see meeting dates. And you'll also see at the same site where we gather information. So for example, if you clicked on this link, you would see the meetings that have already been scheduled, the date they're scheduled, the time they are, and if they're open to the public. If there's not a meeting there that somebody wants to attend, again, we'll make a meeting. And so we can certainly help support any of those ideas. A meeting lasts anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour is about right. And so again, we welcome And so again, we welcome those invitations. On that same web link, you will see all the feedback that we have gathered. And this is true and authentic. And so if any of the community members want to go online and see, well, what kind of feedback are you getting? Lori, Ms. Reinhardt catalogs it here, as quickly as possible, of course, after each meeting. The requests and the feedback are actually quite long right now. He's just sharing it with Dr. Mullins. But it'll be really easy for you to see the priorities of our community as you see those yellow boxes. So this snapshot was taken probably about a week ago. And since then, she's done more meetings, and there's more feedback there. This is why I made a casual comment about indoor air quality because we've seen that a lot. We've certainly seen compensation for our employees and staff a lot. And I'm not at all surprised to see that given the challenges. So you'll see some creative solutions and other options there. And again, we will keep adding them. So anybody that has a meeting, your stuff will be there next. We also add anything else informally. You'll see a column there that says Dr. Sullivan's inspiration from Ed Week article. I read an incredible article about one of the surefire ways to help early childhood literacy is glasses. And so read a really terrific article about increasing opportunities for students to get high-quality vision testing at school and get their glasses at school. So Chris Moore's Division, as you can imagine, is working on trying to see if we can create mobile vision centers. And so that was just from an article I read. So Ms. Reinhardt is tracking it all. If you all read something, send her an email. Again, if you don't remember how to spell her last name, bpseser@brevardschools.org. And so you'll see along that line, you'll see comments and discussions with staff members sometimes, things that we've read and seen. We want it all in one spot. So don't hesitate, like in the middle of the night, you have an idea, just shoot it off, and then we'll add it to the list. It doesn't even have to be organized or coordinated. We will get it on the list so that it's all in that one spot. You'll also find on the website her complete presentation. So if you want to know in advance, you're going to attend a meeting, what is the presentation going to look like? The entire deck is also on the website. Again, you're going to see transparency overload. To aid in our feedback gathering, we also scheduled some community meetings. So perhaps somebody's not in a group, but somebody wants to in-person hear from Ms. Reinhardt, and in fact, in this case, Dr. Mullins as well. We've established four local meetings at our schools. And again, we can do more. That's not a problem. First one is Thursday night at Titusville High School. Again, you see that we tried to think regionally. At those sessions, Dr. Mullins will be sharing some information about our strategic plan. Then Ms. Reinhardt will go through her presentation and take feedback from the group then as well. So an individual interested in contributing can do it by email, by survey, by requesting somebody to come to their group, or attending one of these community groups, or honestly, all kinds of different ways that people can think of. So we're really excited about those as well. And again, just wanted to highlight that we are also working through every school advisory council. You know, SAC is the most important way to be involved as a parent and be involved in decisions being made at the school level. And so we will be asking each of our principals to facilitate a discussion on ESER and then provide us feedback. So we have feedback from every school advisory council. I believe we're doing like a video. Ms. Reinhardt finally accepted that she could not go to all 87 by herself. Mr. Stockman had to talk her into it. And so we will put together some information to share. And again, you'll see, we are going to keep up this join the conversation feedback up as long as possible. The final thing I wanted to point out is at the top tab, you'll see ESER 1 and ESER 2. And on this site, we have posted the complete grant application for all aspects of ESER 1 and ESER 2. You'll be able to see every amendment, any change that was made, our narratives, our data, our details, and line item budgets for all of the grants. Fair warning, you're going to see a lot because I have focused today primarily on the main ESER grants. But if you all recall from ESER 1, there were about 13 sub-grants for pretty narrow and specific topics. All of those grant applications are here as well. And so if somebody wanted to see what we submitted and did for ESER 1, or for a summer recovery one, or a different grant, they could see the completed application here online, including every line item budget. We actually have to submit budget by function and object. So it's quite detailed, and you'll be able to see that information. And then finally, in our last slide, if you scroll down, not on this deck, of course, but you'll see some of the key websites from the federal government, from the state, on some ideas and guidelines and resources about ARP as well as ESER 1 and ESER 2. So we're really excited to kick off our community engagement cycle. Again, I, we're just doing it without direction at this point from the state. But we think it's so important. We just didn't want to wait. We wanted to begin engaging our community. Heard so many incredible ideas that come from some of the interesting segments. It was funny, I had a conversation with Mr. Cheatham when they did the tech specialist. He's like, you know, some of the tech specialists brought up things that had nothing to do with tech. And I said, yeah, but their parents, their sons, their daughters, I want to know what they have to say. And so there is no blueprint. We have no sketch budget. We just know that this is a real unique opportunity to service our entire community, both charters and publics, as well as really protect our workforce, and we're just excited. So we expect an RFA from the state on ARP ESER at some point in time. We do know that they submitted to the federal government on October 6th. So we're optimistic. We have read the state application. And when I say "we," I mean Mr. Stockman. And we are quite confident that anything that they would look for is exactly in our mindset as well. And so really interested in hearing the different ideas. So at this point, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. I know Mr. Susan has been chomping at the bit, so I'm going to go ahead and let the other board members weigh in first. I'm kidding, Mr. Susan, go ahead.
I wanted to say thank you. You did get me up out of my seat. Doesn't say much about that in the slide. Want to make sure that this gets more attention to it because I want to tell you, let me go where I was going. So one of the only things, and we do here in this district, but as a statewide, we don't do. We, we find metrics on math, on social studies, on science, on everything. We don't do it on health of our students. And if you guys remember back in the day, we used to get these Presidential Youth Physical Fitness, right? Remember, you had to do so many sit-ups, so many push-ups, so many, all that stuff, right? And during one of the presidential, and I'm getting there, I'm sorry. One of the presidential terms, they decided to take that and give that to a company that then charged every school $600 to be a part of it. So throughout the nation, slowly, schools just stopped being a part of it. And we stopped following a lot of the metrics. Which now, today, 70% of the individuals that go into the military can't even pass their PT test. Our childhood obesity rates and diabetes is out of control. And there's a big push coming the other way. Not so much the football, don't get me wrong. Like, I love Friday Night Lights, basketball, everything else. But we have not, and I'm not saying Brevard, I'm saying we as a society, have not gotten into that scope of, we need to provide some sort of metric so that we can show gains, losses throughout these kids' careers. Currently, right now, PYFP reached out, that's the Presidential Youth Physical Fitness. They want to bring it back. And they're willing to provide it almost free for the entire state of Florida. And there's a group that actually fired off the organization that was charging the 600, and they've gone a different direction. I'd love to engage with you on possibly, I've raised enough money for Brevard to do it, but there's other things, I would just love to talk to you about that. One of the things I was just trying to get at is this, thank you, thank you, thank you. I love it. And one of the issues that we had to deal with is not being able to track all of the kids' health. Because ultimately, like, here's what's happening. My daughter, and I hate, I never talk about my daughters in my family, but my daughter goes and plays soccer, right, at one of these travel leagues. She pays like 2,000, well, she doesn't, I pay like $2,000 to do it, right? And, and it's shared between me and my ex-wife, so it's not that big of a deal. But the thing is, is that there's a lot of kids out there that can't afford that. There's a lot of kids that, that we don't have an opportunity for to fill that void. And that's what we've lost. So I'd love to sort of find a way to bring that, that piece back. So that's all.
Yeah, so one of the groups that we've already met with are the athletic directors. And as you can imagine, they had quite a list. But some of the things we're talking about is the return to intramurals. We think that is really important in our schools. Would definitely love to see it back in our middle schools, even our high schools, and some elementary programs around it. Rachel Winston, as you know, is a fierce advocate of physical education. We've also already had a meeting with Rachel Winston. And so I, I was pleased to see that in the federal guidance, in the federal documents, they are recommending that level of creativity and connectivity to improve programs in schools. I know this board has been talking about cheerleading. So this would be an opportunity for us to potentially do the maths for all the schools in programming. And so we're, we're really thinking outside the box at really all aspects of a child's life. And so Ms. Orr, with our music and performing arts, she already has given us a pretty good laundry list. And there's just, there's a unique opportunity to infuse support across all parts of a student experience in school. Because we all know that it's sometimes those other experiences that not only for enjoyment's sake allow us to focus in the classroom, but literally from a health's sake allow us to focus in the classroom. And so it was pretty neat. That's why I, I shared the link to that document a million times over. Because we love all that creative thinking and ideas on ways to connect school. We're looking at transportation barriers. One of the things that is really important in my mind with the team is let's identify the barriers to success, and let's tackle those barriers. And so if there are barriers to student participation, if there's barriers to our types of programming for all kinds of students, let's use this opportunity to try to eliminate some of the barriers. You know, some of our caution, of course, are things that extend beyond the time span. So one of the things we have to be careful is we can't enter into contracts beyond the time span of the grant, which right now we expect to be through school year '24, and potentially some flexibility in school year '25. At this point, we just opine based on the information that has been presented to us. So we're looking closely at that. We're looking closely at human capacity. For example, we're really excited about our non-enrollment assistance plan. But we're having trouble finding the humans to fill the positions to fully execute what we know is the plan. And of course, we don't want to put the district in any kind of funding cliff. So we're being super careful at that balance between things that can have a dramatic big impact but won't put the district in a difficult situation at the end of the grant. So the positions that we have added are positions where we know we always have needs for. For example, the guidance counselors, the social workers, and the intervention teachers. We will always be able to absorb all of those positions right back into our district. So we're really mindful of that as well. But hopefully, through positions like the parent liaison, tapping into some members of our community, that, that could be an extension of their parental involvement. And they would get paid for it, which is just bonus, but it's a great way to be involved in the school. So we're really digging deep and trying to find people to look at those positions and ways to impact the school. Lori is engaging with a lot of the vendor community. And so you can certainly connect them to her as well. There's several different tutoring vendors that we have looked at carefully and have identified. As you can imagine, we get about 200 emails a day from the vendor community. So I'm really fortunate that the team does a lot of vetting to make sure they're aligned with our beliefs. And we have really good notes on all of those for whenever the board has to sit down and make some of those final decisions in our, in our final bucket.
Want to follow it up? There's a couple of Michigan State studies that follow up, and I just wanted to read this off. Sports is not just about sports. It's not just about hooking a kid to go to schools, right? Michigan State, 2014, and Vermont University, researchers showed that offering daily before-school aerobic activities at younger, at-risk children reduced the symptoms of ADHD. Michigan State and University of Michigan, 2017, proved that rigorous exercise helped mood, anxiety, and mental health disorders. There's a lot more. And, and I'll be honest with you, I think as we've sort of lost these, we also have a lot of rise of mental health. There might be more to this than just that. I got to plug my sports as much as possible. She opened the door, okay? I'm just telling you, we talked about only giving 10 minutes. I'm sorry, I took probably my next five board meetings up. But I, I, thank you, thank you. All right, I'm quiet, I'm going.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Other board members wish to comment? Cooper, anyone, any other board member? Ms. McDougal, and then Ms. Jenkins?
I just want to say thank you. This is really comprehensive. You always do a great job, you and your team. I really appreciate you all. This is very exciting, and I'm gonna, I have an idea, so I'm going to send Ms. Reinhardt an email. Maybe tonight, if it's not too late, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins? Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Sullivan, to you, your team, all of our cabinet members, and all of their team for being the first approved to be fully funded for ESER 2. That was exciting to hear. But I also want to thank you for being responsible and responsive and prepared for when we finally get instructions from the state of how to apply for over that nearly $100 million for Brevard. It's really, really important, and I appreciate you guys being prepared so we can get it as soon as possible.
I would echo the same appreciation, Dr. Sullivan. And the only thing that I would put in there, not that I disagree with the importance of sports in any way, shape, or form, because I, I love the physical activity part.
Ms. Belford?
I just want to thank Dr. Sullivan for recognizing the need to break down barriers for participation for all students in general. Because I think for a lot of our students, sports is a great outlet, and, and music and theater are great outlets. But for a lot of our kids who that may be too far out of their comfort zone, we know that other opportunities for being involved and developing a peer group are critically important, especially, I mean, throughout K-12, but especially during those middle school years, finding opportunities to get them connected to their school, their community, and their friends is critically important for their mental health as well. And so those outside-the-box things that, for the quiet kids, who may not be willing to do some of those things that require them to be a little bit more out there, I think those are incredibly important as well. So thank you so much for, I, I love that terminology of breaking down barriers because I, I think that is so incredibly important. So we appreciate you as always, you and your entire team. She did. Where were you?
Sue offered us those seats, and we didn't want to be at a congressional hearing, so we took, we took the left side instead, but thank you.
Yes, Dr. Mullins.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I just want to take the opportunity as well to do a little bit of, just a brief history back. A year and a half ago-ish, when we heard CARES Act was coming down, and we were in a cabinet meeting. And I, we hadn't, we didn't know what to expect with the CARES Act. It was $17 million. We were like, this is going to be great. And I said, "Dr. Sullivan, I'd like you to take the lead on CARES Act." And she accepted it very willingly. Little did she know. We had no idea that ESER 2 was going to come down, that ESER, that ARP ESER was going to be a reality. It wasn't even out there. And thank you for your continued leadership to, to put a great team together to do the day-to-day work. But the oversight and the management is no small task. And as well as the entire cabinet, you know, with this type of funding comes tremendous responsibility and anticipated accountability, as it should. These are taxpayer dollars. We take that responsibility very seriously. And I can confidently say that the account, we are making all of this available to our community so they can be assured we are being responsible and are prepared to be held accountable. Because it's really not if we're audited. We recognize that it's a matter of when. These funds will be audited, and we will be prepared with every bit of confidence. funds will be audited, and we will be prepared with every bit of confidence. But that translates across the entire cabinet, all eight other divisions, managing the responsibility of technology and impacts into operations, and our schools utilizing the dollars for tutoring and for academic supports that are outside the box and so on. So we are thrilled beyond words at the resources this provides our kids to overcome any learning loss from the last year and a half, and to really accelerate our kids moving forward. But Dr. Sullivan, thank you again for continuing to take up the charge and for the leadership that is represented across the district.
Which one of those guys is in charge of sports?
Ms. Reinhardt is in charge of gathering all the feedback right now from all of our constituents.
I have some feedback for you.
And she's, she's the best first at ARPSR right now, as we are identifying and targeting. Again, please use the email, please reach out to your civic organizations, we'd love to come and meet with them. And that includes, of course, any of our stakeholders that are in meetings. You know, we want to hear from everybody. We know the genius is out there, and sometimes it's from a perspective that none of us have thought of, because we've been immersed in like the typical boundaries. So we want to hear those boundary-challenging ideas and work together with our community on them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. All right, next, we are going to hear from our chief operating officer, Mr. Robin Novelli, on our 2021-2022 Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, or FSAT, report.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Ms. Belford, school board members, Dr. Mullins, good evening. Our, all of our schools have completed their FSAT for this year on time. It was due and had to be sent into the state prior to October the 1st. And as you know, that's quite a comprehensive assessment of 434 questions that each principal has to complete each year for the Office of Safe Schools in the Department of Education in the state of Florida. Once that is done by all our schools, Major Neal and I analyze the data, and we continue to analyze the data throughout the year. And we also complete what's called the District Best Practices Assessment, which is what I like to call the district version of the FSAT. And I want to share with you some things that we found there and what we'll be submitting to the state. First of all, the FSAT stands for Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, and this is the district safety and security assessment that we're referring to now that is due this month to the state. And this, in conjunction with the school risk assessments completed by all schools, is intended for the use by district school officials to help identify threats, vulnerabilities, and appropriate safety controls for the schools they supervise. It's also important to know that the information contained within the FSAT for our schools is confidential information exempt from public record. But we are going to take a look at some of the high-level views of some of the things that are going on in our schools that are measures that we've put in place in recent years. First of all, we have what's called the School Emergency Operations Plan. Our principals know it as the COP. And it is completed, and it is revised each summer by our principals and their administrative teams, along with their SROs and other law enforcement agents. And it is shared, along with the active assailant procedures, with all of their staff. In addition to the COP, our superintendent has issued annually since 2019 a directive outlining mandated mandated safety procedures, and discussed these directives during leadership team meetings with all the principals. And as we analyze the results of the FSATs from the schools, we found that that has made a significant impact on our principals, and they are following his mandates and as he renews those each year. In April 2020, we had a third-party security consultant that completed an independent appraisal of safety measures and recommendations for enhancing those measures with improvements at the building and district levels. Principals and district leaders have analyzed those recommendations and are working towards enhancements with available budgets. At the end of last school year, 2021, and throughout this summer, we were able to put together a secure group document where principals and district leaders are able to take a look at these recommendations and track the progress and implementation of these recommendations. And a capital improvement plan has been developed to implement facility and technological enhancement recommendations on that list. We're starting to work through that list and do those things. All the schools have undergone an assessment of the 800-megahertz radio reception, and we have that data available so that we can start to address places where there are needs for amplification for that radio system that our law enforcement agents use. District security staff have provided opportunities for schools to test the usage of the Rave app when conducting active assailant drills. And each year in February, we conduct drills where they can use that, as well as throughout the year, they're able to use staff assist function there. Students participate in monthly critical incident drills and monthly fire drills, where they are educated on the district's general emergency procedures to prepare them for a variety of emergencies. Schools complete after-action reports that are reviewed by the Office of District and School Security. And we make sure that each school completes those on a timely basis so that we can answer to the state on that. And we also have what's called a Student Crime Watch program, and this is used for reporting suspicious activities, and it is enhanced by our Crime Line Speak Out Hotline, as well as the state's app called Fortify Florida. And these are promoted both by the school and at the district level, and we use our K-9 deputies quite often from the Brevard County Sheriff's Office to promote this opportunity for students and staff, and anyone else for that matter, to report suspicious situations. Some of the other details that we see as a result of analyzing the the FSAT and initiatives that we have undergone in the last year or two include, again, this independent security assessment. And what we're doing now is that when principals have to do what's called a campus tour, it's the sixth section of the school FSAT, when they're doing that, we ask them to kill two birds with one stone, and also take a look at, whilst they're doing the campus tour, where they are in terms of the implementation of those recommendations that they took responsible responsibility for as the principal, and updating those on this new sure document that we've provided for them, so we can keep track of that. And of course, district staff are also inputting as we are able to help out schools with different facility or technological advances that check off some of these security recommendations. We've improved access control, hardened vestibles, added enhanced security cameras, upgraded and rekeyed classroom doors, provided accountability for compliance with security procedures. We've trained all the schools for threat assessment teams and continue to train new threat assessment team members as they come about. Transportation Department has had the opportunity to work with the TSA, the Transportation Security Administration, to improve security while busing students, and this included training of our bus drivers by the TSA. District security has worked with school administrators to practice the usage of Rave Panic Button, and it's important to note, through Mutual Link, which is part of the Rave Panic Button, our district security can provide live video monitoring to local law enforcement, so that if we were in a very bad situation, our local law enforcement would have access to that and be able to respond and help us out immediately. And so my recommendations, having gone through and analyzed the data and taken a look at what has been going on here and what's been working, first of all, I would recommend the superintendent again reissue his mandatory procedures. They've had a great effect on our principals, and they are following that very carefully. And so I would ask that Dr. Mullins do that again this school year, make that available, and discuss that with our principals at a leadership meeting. I also suggest something for myself, I'm the chief operating officer, and that I should communicate with individual principals regarding this FSAT with answers that reveal issues that might have come up from the superintendent's mandatory security procedures, or other answers that indicate possible misunderstandings related to security issues. And so that's an ongoing process, and I've already started that, and working with principals to make sure they understand. Some of these questions are a little complicated about the way they're worded, and there's 434 questions. And so any way that we can help the principals better understand what's being asked and what's available to them, we're glad to help them out with that. And also that the director of a district in school security, that would be Major Neal, should address all principals during the leadership team meeting and review key FSAT questions where data analysis reveals misunderstandings or need for strengthened protocols. We should continue to upgrade and installing additional school security video cameras to work in conjunction with Rave and Mutual Link to further improve law enforcement's access to the camera system for live viewing, remote off-campus location. And if made available, we intend on writing a school hardening grant that we can use to upgrade the intercom systems that are still needed at some of our schools. And we also need to implement the multi-year facility security plan to enhance the safety of schools, to include 800-megahertz amplification, where recent testing indicated a need, and secure vestibles at main points of entry where we still might need those. And so the conclusion that I have for this district FSAT, if you will, is that in Brevard Public School, our principals, in conjunction with law enforcement and district offices of security, facilities, educational technology, and student services, have made substantial improvements in our school's safety. However, work still needs to be done, and approval of these recommendations presented will continue improving the school and district's safety and security. As part of this assessment that I have to turn in from the district level this month to the Office of Safe Schools at the Department of Education, one of the questions is, does the board themselves, does your board have recommendations that they would like to provide to the Department of Education to consider recommending to the governor, Florida Legislature, and the State Board of Education regarding policy changes or funding needed to facilitate continued school safety planning improvement in response at the state, district, or school levels? They can be included within this FSAT district safety and security assessment. So at this point, if there are any questions the board has, or if you have recommendations that you would like me to include in this report to the state, I'd be glad to do that for you.
Any board members wish to offer up any recommendations? Ms. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Novelli. There's one that I I think is ongoing and very important, and that is our continuing funding for mental health services. We find that mental health of all of our students is crucial at this point, and it's been a rough couple of years, and all the data is suggesting that it is, it is almost a pandemic in itself with mental health for our students. So I would like us to reach out to our state legislatures and say, please fund mental health, whether it be counselors, social workers, mental health programs, continue the funding for mental health. And I know that our governor's wife is very much involved in that, so I'm hoping that that will continue for us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, be glad to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Novelli, for the update today. And I just wanted to highlight that some of the things that I saw, you know, we were talking about the implementation, just a big thanks and shout-out to the community for the passage of the SLSR tax, because I know we were really able to use a lot of those funds to put these things in place. And unfortunately, that's, a lot of those things are not things that we can publicly share, because they have to do with security, but that really helps with the funding of those initiatives.
Certainly does, thank you.
There are two things that I would suggest. One, you you touched on some things we were doing with transportation, with our bus drivers, some training that was done. I just want us to continue, whether it's more with funding from the state, but safety on buses is such an essential thing and such a vulnerable time, I guess, too, because you only usually have one, maybe two adults on the bus at the time. And so whether it's GPS, you know, cameras, so funding, additional funding for safety on buses, or at least a study on what is, what are best practices for those things. And the other thing is, we had mentioned before, I think, two years in a row with this, asking the state to make some adjustments to our drills. And so currently, every school has to do both a fire drill and an active shooter or a hostage, you know, situation-type drill. And this just ends up in a lot of missed academic time, but also just just the disruption of the day, when I think we actually lose maybe some of the efficacy of the drills. And so I think we, whether, we had mentioned one before, maybe one drill a month, like an either-or rotating, but whatever, I think we, this board has talked in previous years, we would support a reduction, you know, high quality but lower quantity in the drills that we have to do.
Ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Novelli. I I know that you mentioned that you had done an assessment of the reception of the 800-megahertz radios, and it's really important for all of our first responders to be able to communicate outside of the building and inside of the building. And so there has been some significant improvement of the signal outside the building, but because of how our buildings are made, there is difficulty making that transportation from outside to inside. So we obviously still need funding for increasing the signal and amplification within our buildings. And I know this is something that we advocated for in the past, but clearly is something that is not 100% rectified, so I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be glad to include that. Thank you.
Is anyone prepared?
I absolutely concur with you on the drills. This is ridiculous. I mean, we have kids going through the drills, interruption to our education environment over and over again to do the same thing that they all know, they go to, it's ridiculous. Also, cameras and stuff like that, I call them wings, they're arms on the buses. We have a bad, I mean, remember, I I did a program a couple of years ago called Busted, right, where they went out and they had, Melbourne Police Department was waiting, and as the buses went to stop, people went right by them. That's gonna kill a kid. And so they went and swarmed, and they they wrote over 200 tickets in like five days. And if that's happening around those buses in Melbourne, then having those there, and and I don't know how that works, who writes the ticket or anything like that, but like, it opened my eyes, right? So yeah, all there. But the one thing that I have is, oh, mental health. One of the problems we keep saying is, is that we're gonna, like, to the state, we say, and and I applaud everybody, but we keep saying, we need more mental health, give us more money, and stuff like that, but they don't like do it infrastructurally. So like, they should be having, get free colleges if you go through mental health as a psychologist, once you come out, and you know what I mean? Like a pathway, this is something that's gonna be with us for the next, for the rest of our lives. And the the incentivization of creating that has to go back just further than just a carrot of more money, because we can throw out, like Mrs. Sullivan said, there's so many things out there that that we just want to go higher, but there's no worker's pool for it. And today, it just came out in the news that the highest number of people have left their jobs since 2000. Like, across our economy, more people have left their original jobs to go to different ones than right now in the last 21 years. So I would applaud that and say, let's do it a little bit further and ask for a streamlined workforce pipeline so that they can do that. Okay, but my thing is, is that, what about the sustainability? I mean, we're like standing here, spending money on cameras, spending money on all this stuff, and there's gonna be a shelf life, right? So like those girls tumbling on those, on the mats, right? The security cameras we put, like, my kid comes like every month, I need a new battery. I'm not, I'm outlawing battery-operated toys this year, just because I'm tired of replacing them, but there's a shelf life on everything, right? So my thing is, is sustainability. A lot of our state wants to give us money to try to do these different things in the grant forms, but we need to start transitioning those to include our, you know, the trainings for our security officers and everything else, our guardians. Those need to be not on a grant form, but a continual, that's all, sustainable funding. Those need to be not on a grant form, but a continual, that's all, sustainable funding rather than grant-style funding where we just don't know. Because if we hit those cliffs, it's millions of dollars we have to take out of our teacher pay, and that's not fair, or our, not, sorry, not teacher pay, but increases in cost.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Couple things, Mr. Novelli. I absolutely support the, if there's a way for us to encourage funding for things like intercoms in our schools, because I know that, especially in Brevard County, with the age of our schools, we have a significant number of intercom systems that need to be replaced, and they come at like ridiculously expensive cost. When I first found out how much it costs us to replace an intercom system, I nearly fell out of my chair. So absolutely support that in your recommendation. The other thing that I want to touch on, and Mr. Susan mentioned it to some extent, but, yeah, course, Mr. Susan, that's exactly where I was going. No, the, so we have been fortunate enough that the state funded our initial guardian program, and they have continued, although we've had some roller coasters with it, they have continued to provide some funding for the program. And I think this year it was like $6.5 million for the entire state. Don't want to be greedy, definitely want to be appreciative of that. However, the reality is that training for this particular group of individuals is a challenge because when our schools are open and we have faculty and staff in our schools, they need to be at our schools providing that safety and security. And so I would really love it if they would give some consideration into expanding those training dollars for both, as we have attrition and we have to bring on new groups of guardians, but also for the ones who are currently with us to be able to expand our training opportunities. What we run into is to pull them on the weekend or during weeks over the summer, they're 10-month employees, we have two months out of the summer where we could do additional training, but there would be significant additional cost to that, to pay them, but also to pay the people who are training them. And so continued expansion of that program, and I would say recognition of the fact that, you know, we are provided some safe schools funds that we utilize to pay for our school resource officers. Those funds typically do not increase significantly, and yet we know that we have increases each and every year to pay the various municipalities and the sheriff's department, not only for increases in SRO salaries, and that's going to be exacerbated with a minimum wage increase as well, right? We're going to feel those costs one way or another. But also as our program expands, we're hiring more and more staff to oversee those programs and make sure that everything's running the way that it should be going. So I think all of those contribute to a need for significant additional funding beyond the $6.5 million that they've allocated this year. And I think it speaks to the sustainability issue that Mr. Susan brought forward. Not only do we have capital sustainability issues, but we also have issues in being able to continue to afford as everything costs more. So if we could advocate on that, that issue, I would certainly appreciate it.
I'd be glad to include that in the report. Thank you.
Anything else from Dr. Mullins? You look like you want to put something forward?
Well, no, I think Mr. Novelli and our security team, working with Major Neal, certainly the board's feedback and the input, I think provides a robust response to the Florida Department of Education and our responsibility and obligation to ensuring the safety of our students. Thank you, Mr. Novelli, for your leadership and ensuring that we, in this period of expanded safety awareness around the health of our kids, we're also keeping our eye fixed on the physical safety of our kids in our schools. We've not paused, let up, or been any less attentive to our day-to-day responsibilities to keeping our kids safe in their physical surrounding and so on. So thank you for your continued leadership. I will just elevate, if you will, the partnership and the support we have with the Brevard County Sheriff's Office in overseeing our Office of School and District Security, which then translates into, we have 11, 12 municipalities, other law enforcement agencies that serve the greater part of Brevard, but in different capacities. The cooperation, the communication, and the partnership that we must maintain and sustain to have cohesive support for our schools, it is the fiver of our security plan. And I'm thrilled that our partnership across this great district, across all our law enforcement agencies remains strong, intact, and that we can call on our partners at any moment to respond to our schools. They're there, they're engaged, they're responsive, they are attentive. So thank you, Major Neal, for your leadership in district security, and Mr. Novelli as chief operating officer overseeing this responsibility for the district. I was reflecting on all of the information, the comprehensive look at our district to our community throughout today. The board got started at 10:00 this morning with a thorough review and update of our financial position as a district, both recurring dollars, non-recurring dollars. We then transitioned early afternoon into a presentation of the strategic plan that's been updated, that touches every aspect of our school district. Dr. Sullivan presented a very comprehensive review of the ESAR funding that touches every fabric of our districts and our schools across the district. And now tonight, the security update. I would encourage, encourage, encourage our public to go back, if you missed this morning's presentations, go watch the recording of them, be engaged and involved in the vast aspect of a district with essentially a billion-dollar budget. This is your school system. We want you to be engaged, we want you to be part of every aspect of it. I know we're going through the challenges and the tough times of a pandemic as a district and wanting to get through those, but there's a lot of very important work that's going on in the school district and across our schools to meet the needs of our kids. Next, on October 26th, our next workshop meeting day, I will do a plug already. My leaders of, my assistant superintendents of leading and learning will be walking the board through our annual comprehensive student assessment presentation, be very engaging as it has in the past, as well as Assistant Superintendent Sue Han in Facilities will be getting, will be presenting our facilities planning process. So two weeks from now, same time, same place, will be as informative and essential for our community to be engaged. So thank you, Madam Chair, for a few minutes to put that plug in.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Mullins and Mr. Novelli. Thank you so much for your leadership in this area. I know it was a big chunk of responsibility that you took on, and we certainly appreciate the work that you've done and the work that Major Neal has done as well to ensure that we are continuing to progress in our safety in the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Board members, if you are not opposed, I would like to request that we take about a 10-minute recess prior to going into public comment. Are you guys okay with that? All right. So we are going to take a brief recess. We'll be back in approximately 10 minutes.
Does this resolution give me, as a parent, the power to call upon an officer in this room and ask them to remove any of you on this board from this meeting if I believe your vote harms my child, or if something you said hurts my feelings? Instead of implementing this resolution, you could immediately solve this entire problem by acknowledging that parents are the sole stakeholder in their child's education, stop forcing harmful masks on our children, and crack down on educators pushing social justice in classrooms. Maybe you can also vote on a resolution that installs a safe space over there in the corner for all the people who get their feelings hurt when confronted with simple truths as well. Also, to suggest that the COO could possibly spend less time harassing parents as a bully without masks when they are not in violation of the policy, and more time learning how to put together an effective PowerPoint presentation.
All right, hold your applause, please. All right, that is going to move us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullen.
There are seventeen agenda items under this category.
What are the, I'm sorry, does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Hearing non, please vote.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal, is there any discussion? Hearing non, please vote. I might have come to find it's not up either. I refreshed and it didn't come up.
Got a Reese over there?
Not coming up.
Here we go. All right. No, I'm right there.
We're almost there.
I got it.
The motion passes five zero. All right, Dr. Mullen, please let us know about the items under action.
There are two items under this category. The first one is G thirty-one on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Jenkins, was that Ms. Jenkins?
Sure.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we could give them the opportunity to speak first so that they could get their children home, I don't know if, I don't know how to do that. I just saw there was two families with children that were here and I didn't know if, did you speak, I don't know how to do this, Chairperson, you know my emotion, you want to ask?
Yes, ma'am.
And check other board members because my motion may not have support among everybody.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, so for clarification, we have one person speaking to an actual agenda item, not an information item or a discussion item, that one person is speaking on the resolution. Everyone else is speaking to either an information item or a discussion item that's on the agenda. So if we could, if I, well.
Do you want to move them all up? Is that what you want to do?
I, it doesn't matter to me. My, my struggle is I have a motion and a second to take people out of order on the agenda based on having children, but I don't have.
Well, it fails because none of them, did any of you speak to the agenda item? Can you read the person's name?
That would be the information item on the public, public comment policy, I think, is what's being referenced, so.
I don't think so. But that's him, he doesn't have kids.
Correct. He is the only resolution, the only agenda person.
So my motion passes, does not pass because nobody wrote to the agenda, which was.
Okay, so I have a.
If you move everybody up, let's do it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, so I'm going to need a voice vote on that motion. Correct, Ms. Escobar. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Nay. Ms. Campbell, which I didn't hear, which side you came on that?
Oh, nay, since we don't have any.
Okay, and Ms. Jenkins, I didn't hear your vote.
Yeah, nay.
Okay, so the motion fails one to four on that particular issue. So that brings us back to, we have 19 speakers. What are the wishes of the board as far as addressing those speakers? We can take our one agenda item speaker and then postpone the rest to the end, or we can move all 19 speakers to this portion of the meeting. I will take a motion.
Can I ask a question really quick?
Sure.
Just make sure. It looks like after the public comment, we just have the consent to action items and then we're back to public comment. Is that correct?
Um, ye, um, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm of that we just go ahead and leave it as, as we have to the agenda, the one person, and then take those quick votes, which would be quick, and then hear the rest right after that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Now, I'd like to make the next motion, the, the next 18 speakers, that if there's people that have families, that they move up in that after agenda motion because they're inside.
Mr. Gibbs, is that okay with an amended motion, or should I vote on the motion on the floor and then allow Mr. Susan to make his second? Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the floor to take agenda-only speakers at this point in time and to take the remainder of the speakers during the later public comment portion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes five zero. Mr. Susan, I understand you have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move up the speakers from, that have family members that are here to the, to the first spots, based upon the fact that they, um, they may have to get the children home. So when we go to that discussion after the agenda, if we can move those people up.
So can I just, you said family members. Can I just clarify that you want?
Children. There's children. Raise your hands if you brought children and you're a public speaker. Those people. Those two.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes four to one. Okay, so Joey, if you would please approach as I'm reading the comments, give me one second to get organized here. All right, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up. It's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. All right, Joey, when you are ready, sir.
I just want to say to the school board member who's experienced threats, we, while we disagree, I, I want to apologize on behalf of the majority, we do not condone their actions. The extreme fringe outliers do not represent us and they are counterproductive to our goals and we condemn them as well. But regarding the FSBA resolution and how it relates to the NSBA letter to the president, just to clear it, just to make it clear, all the parents in this room and all the parents across the country standing up to school boards, we are, we are not the problem. We are actually fighting against the problem. It is the school boards that have become infected with woke ideologies that have deviated from educational norms and forced our children to be subjected to social activism in schools that promotes racism, segregation, oppression, victimhood, sexually explicit materials, and unjustified hatred towards our country. It's the school boards that have forced children to wear masks against everything that's natural, against law, against the science and violation of parental rights. The children should come first and when you look at the people who are creating harm towards our children, it is not parents, but members of school boards and teachers who confuse social justice as education. The parents that come to these meetings are the frontline fighters against the real evil that is contaminating our schools. In fact, we can probably agree on one thing and that is we have really nothing in common because everything I just mentioned, I consider a threat to my child's well-being. I also consider it to be child abuse. There are school board associations, there are teachers unions, but who are the advocate groups for the children? Well, that would be the parents. And if we had the same federal government right now, I would be, it would be the parents writing to the DOJ and the FBI to investigate school boards and teachers unions for crimes against children. The irony is that some school boards here, or some school board members here and all across the country have managed to create these problems with our school system and now claim to be the victims. Now the school board, National School Board Association is asking for federal assistance from the government as they label parents an imminent threat and some even as domestic terrorists, while also trying to adopt the new FSBA resolution to ensure views are heard and exchanged in a safe environment during hearings. How exactly does this resolution benefit parents? What about a safe environment for children? Does this resolution give me, as a parent, the power to call upon an officer in this room and ask them to remove any of you on this board from this meeting if I believe your vote harms my child or if something you said hurts my feelings? Instead of implementing this resolution, you could immediately solve this entire problem by acknowledging that parents are the sole stakeholder in their child's education, stop forcing harmful masks on our children, and crack down on educators pushing social, social justice in classrooms. Maybe you can also vote on a resolution that installs a safe space over there in the corner for all the people who get their feelings hurt when confronted with simple truths as well. Also, to suggest that the COO could possibly spend less time harassing parents as a bully without masks when they are not in violation of the policy and more time learning how to put together an effective PowerPoint presentation.
All right, hold your applause, please. All right, that is going to move us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are 17 agenda, agenda items under this category.
What are the, I'm sorry, does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Hearing non, please vote. I refreshed and it didn't come up.
Yeah.
Got a Reese over there?
Not coming up.
Here we go. Sorry. No worries. Nope, I'm right there.
We're almost there.
I got it.
I got it.
The motion passes five zero. All right, Dr. Mullins, please let us know about the items under action.
There are two items under this category. The first one is G31 on Department School Initiated Agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, please vote. I refreshed and it didn't come up.
Yeah.
Got a Reese over there?
Not coming up.
Here we go. All right. No worries.
We're almost there.
The motion passes five zero. All right, Dr. Mullins, please let us know about the items under action.
There are two items under this category. The first one is G31 on Department School Initiated Agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, please vote. I have to refresh everything.
I know, it's not working really well.
Did it come up for anybody?
Yep.
Just in. The motion passes five zero. All right, we will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins.
There are four items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any of the information items on the agenda this evening? All right.
Oh, I just, what, we had talked about, Dr. Mullins actually encouraged the viewing audience to go back and listen to, we had a pretty good conversation around the public participation policy and aside just encourage everybody who's interested in that particular one to go back and listen to our, what the one o'clock?
It was our one o'clock workshop.
We've been here a long time today, our one o'clock workshop. We had some good conversation around that.
Yes, thank you for that recognition, Ms. Campbell, and that was, for anyone who's going to view it, we had strategic planning first, right?
Oh, right, it's after that.
And then we moved into the policy discussion after that. So you should be able to click on the agenda and go to the policy portion without sitting through strategic plan if you don't want to. Okay.
But you're encouraged to sit through that as well.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Sit through all of it.
No. Don't.
It's good stuff. Encourage, Mr. Susan, encourage.
I, I don't, yeah, okay.
You already said.
All right, then that is going to take us to the remainder of the speakers who signed up to comment on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. We'll hear the speakers in the order in which they signed up, with the exception of Mr. Susan's motion. As stated earlier, reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chair. Should audience participation interfere with the speakers being heard or hearing me, I will be forced to clear the room. When I call your name, please line up along the east wall of the boardroom to facilitate the smooth transition of speakers. We will begin with our two families that have children with them, per Mr. Susan's recommendation. And then Karen Colby, after that. Karen, if you wouldn't mind getting on deck.
Yes.
Yes, so, give me, yes, we'll do, Ms. Escobar, absolutely. For some reason, I am super discombobulated with placement on all of the cords. Just give me a second. No, it's just this.
That good?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Appreciate your assistance.
Yep.
All right, for our first two speakers, if you would please make sure to state your name so we can make sure we get record. Ms. Escobar is taking minutes and wants to make sure and, and that way I can also notate the, the paper here, if you would. So, whenever you're ready.
Michelle Beavers. I wanted to first address the idea that there aren't many students dropping out of your, out of the Brevard School Districts. Like you said last time that there wasn't. It looks, from August 10th to end of last month, there was about almost 1,900 students that dropped out. And these were not students that had transfer or change of placement. These are students who left Brevard School District. And I'm not really sure completely on your complete numbers of our district because I've gotten a couple of different online sources, but it looks to be they're approaching 2% to 3% of your population that's left since August, and that isn't including October. That, to me, is a large number. What that translates to, according to USNews.com, is $19 million worth of lost revenue that comes in, but if you take away the expenses of what it actually costs to educate a student, which is published at 8,788, leaving a revenue of 1,534 dollars a student after expenses. So that translates to $2,900,794. That's gone as of, of August. So to me, that's an important number and we were led to believe it was insignificant number last board meeting or two. Also, the, the three minutes that you're allotting people to speak, to me, seems a reasonable amount of time. You're getting paid $40,000 roughly a year. It's one time a month. If you have to spend a couple of extra hours here to hear people, I think it's worth it. I don't think it should be cut short. It's really not that, that large of, of, of a time. It's one day a month. The next thing I want to talk about is books. I know that you guys are hopefully aware of some books that were recently taken out of Brevard Schools. There are other books too that I feel, I feel should be taken out of Brevard Schools. And you talked about engaging the public, engaging these parents. And I would like to accept that challenge and have parents form groups in high schools and junior highs, helping vet these books for the librarians because right now the librarian is the only person who picks these books. And apparently that didn't go so well for some of our schools. And I think these parents who have a vested interest in these children, who care about what they're actually learning and reading, should be a part of that process if they want to be. We have parents who would love the opportunity to come vet and say, hey, maybe this book isn't a good idea. And by the way, I want to thank you for offering to let the kids go first, the kids who have parents here. And those of you who voted against that, that speaks volumes about what you think is important. These kids are trying to go to school. It's important I'm here to help protect them. And to not allow them to go first is, I don't know what, why you would vote against that. It's not like I'm taking up more time. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
How's it going, school board members? I'm Christopher McGill. You say trust the science. Same science that said masks work, masks don't work, and masks work again. Same science that said the vaccines are 90% effective. Now we've all come to find out that we need boosters every six months. Same science that said we need to go on lockdowns. Those lockdowns only contributed to weakened immune systems, obesity, which we all know viruses are attracted to. The same science, the states, that states we are in a pandemic and that COVID is a deadly virus, but the border is wide open. Those crossing aren't being tested nor vaccinated. And they supposedly aren't cross-contaminating the virus as well to others. The same science that wants to mandate children and many others to get vaccinated, while Congress, United States Postal Service, FDA, CDC, who, the White House, several vaccine companies aren't mandating to get vaccines at all. Does it worry any of you that two top FDA officials and one top NIH official just recently resigned? Last year, we were told hospitals were at capacity in California and New York. Prior administration took action, sent hospital ships to those states, which revealed the big lie, they never were used. Why didn't the current administration send those ships to Florida when we were having a capacity issues with hospitals here? Because we never needed them. We had a shortage of staff, not a capacity problem. I know that the chief financial officer that was up here shortly ago, he made some comments and I also wanted to bring it to your guys' attention. Do you guys have any kind of, if there's a, if there's a threat or an active, if there's an active threat near or within a school district, do you have any kind of policy in place where you ask the staff or the children to take their mask off so you can help, help identify the threat that's in the area? I want to also know if any of you, do any of you know anyone or have you yourself contracted COVID even though you wear a mask? People can track COVID through eyes, nose, mouth, touching things, et cetera. It's almost impossible to track or trace one who gets COVID or where they could get it from. If I'm not mistaken, our governor has put in place an executive order or perhaps put into law that one's business cannot be sued when it relates to contracting COVID. But if masks pose a health risk to children and/or staff within our schools, who's held accountable? Is that you guys? Or is it the nurse at the school or the principal? Because there's no executive order or law stating that if masks imposes risk to one's health, then someone has to be held accountable. Thanks a bunch.
Thanks, Chris. All right, as Karen's approaching our next three speaker, sorry, as Karen is approaching our next three speakers will be Katie Delaney, Sarah Chivario, and Charles Middleton. If you guys wouldn't mind getting on deck for me, I would appreciate it. Whenever you're ready, Karen.
Hi. I came here because I was a little distressed regarding the findings that our school board is non-compliant formally under the current Florida law by the Department of Education regarding masks. I ask that anyone of the board, and this is directed only at the chairman, I ask that anyone on the board who ignored their own councils, who was present and counsel to not vote this in, and this caused us to be non-compliant, I would like to ask the chairperson to consider asking them for their resignation immediately. To expect your students to respect you when you do not respect the governor is a sham. Your resignation would improve their, and repair the relations between families and students in this county and their teachers. The teachers are working hard, but they're confused by the mixed messaging. Fallujah County just modified all restrictions regarding masks. Kids already didn't have to wear them. Now the parents and the volunteers and the teachers don't have to either when they're on campus. Be like Fallujah. I came here to praise Ted Kimmy from Satellite High Football Coach. He is also, also the athletic director. He can help with your mental health stuff because if you guys had him lead the other athletic directors, no one, I'm sorry, can I get my tie back? Someone's not looking at me.
Keep going, please.
Okay, well, she's the one that's responsible for my district. So, okay, I can't communicate with my own district person.
Keep going, please.
Thank you. Ted Kimmy has been a great example. In the five years that he's been at Satellite, we've gone from a dropout problem, drug picking and using schools, kids that were known for beating each other up over who stole who's pot. And now they're a cohesive unit of athletes, athletes and academic scholars who get scholarships, go all over the place, especially West Point Academy and most notably also Annapolis this year. I came to praise him because if we all, if all we do is complain, nothing will get done. So we need to fix the problem with the compliance and get rid of the masks immediately. I respect you guys, but this doesn't do anything. It doesn't do anything to protect any of you. See, you want, I've got a lot of money for PPE. If you want masks, each kid needs 16 per day. They change them every half hour. We need locking disposable devices to put these unsanitary masks in. They have to count them, account for them. If anyone's not changing theirs in a half hour, there needs to be repercussions. If you're going to institute this program, you need to own it. Please. The mental health is because of the masks. Okay? I'm here to volunteer also about reading and about helping you with the sports. Matt, I'll talk to you later. And I want to tell you that the uniforms are a waste of money. They're making them go to Nike instead of Adidas.
Thank you, Karen.
For sports. Thank you.
Katie?
No, that's fine. She knows how to do it.
I'm Katie Delaney. Members of the board, I'm here today to step up to the challenge that you guys gave us last time. I, I want to work with you all. That is where our passion is. Our kids are our number one. And I also want to say that I, you may believe it, you may not, but I pray for each and every one of you every day. For your safety, for your decision-making skills, your discernment. Some of the evil that's been pushed in our districts, the divisiveness, it's got to stop. It's got to stop between parents. It's got to stop amongst you all. We all have to work together for the betterment of our kids. And I know that that's what we want. So the next part that I, the next thing that I want to talk about is the public comment. Very infrequently, there are less than 10 people or less. So almost every meeting, our time will get cut short and one minute is surely not enough time to speak with you all. And public trust, the way that it can get rebuilt is if we work together. We stop allowing comments being flown from this mic to parents out here amongst you all. When certain people go off on a tangent against parents, we need that quickly stopped. I'm here giving the olive branch. I, I want to work with you all. The achievement gap, I am completely 100% invested in. And I have some really good ideas that I would love to speak about. I grew up here in Brevard County. Mr. Susan was one of my teachers. I love this community. I'm happy to raise my children here. But what's gone on these past two years is devastating. It's devastating. I know people in this, in this room and it devastates me that we haven't even looked at each other. People that I love and that I helped and that, you know, I think loved me too. And this, this goes for the whole community. We need to start working together as a community. These are our kids. We all love our kids. We're all just trying to do the best for our kids that we can, even though it might be in different ways. But I'm not going to take any, take any more time. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Katie. Sarah?
Good evening. I just want to say it was, I was pleasantly surprised at how much mental health was addressed from the dais tonight. I'm Sarah, by the way. However, I left the last board meeting bewildered, disrespected, and threatened by your superintendent. I have never been treated so inhumanely by a politician and I'm from Chicago. Since I have attended BPS board meetings, I have followed your ever-changing decorum rules, including complying with your recent illegal mask mandate to attend BPS board meetings and wait for a mile out of time to speak. Even though I have my disagreements with your recent political and illegal choices, I respect the elected position you hold and have respectfully complied. And my children have too. And now you want to take away my three or one-minute time slot to speak at board meetings. I'm not your enemy and I want your board to come back under DOE compliance so we can move forward as a school community. Until then, I will continue to hold you and your board accountable to comply with the DOE and the law. The bias from the dais is blatant. Madam Chair, you have stated you want us to move forward and create unity, yet you have allowed board members to insult other sitting Brevard County politicians from the dais. I find this request incredulous as you create a deeper divide in our community from the dais. You also allow others to speak about parents who want masks to be optional in very insulting and hurtful ways, including but not limited to personal attacks on our parenting, that we are selfish, that we don't follow science. And public trust, the way that it can get rebuilt is if we work together, we stop allowing comments being flown from this mic to parents out here, um, amongst you all. When certain people go off on a tangent against parents, we need that swiftly stopped. I'm here giving the olive branch. I, I want to work with you all. The achievement gap, I am completely 100% invested in, and I have some really good ideas that I would love to speak about. I grew up here in Brevard County. Mr. Susan was one of my teachers. I love this community. I'm happy to raise my children here, but what's gone on these past two years is devastating. It's devastating. I know people in this, in this room and it devastates me that we haven't even looked at each other. People that I love and that I helped and, um, that, you know, I think loved me too. And this, this goes for the whole community. We need to start working together as a community. These are our kids. We all love our kids. We're all just trying to do the best for our kids that we can, even though it might be in different ways. But I'm not gonna take any, take any more time. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Katie. Sarah?
Good evening. I just want to say it was, I was pleasantly surprised at how much mental health was addressed from the dais tonight. Um, I'm Sarah, by the way. However, I left the last board meeting bewildered, disrespected, and threatened by your superintendent. I have never been treated so inhumanely by a politician, and I'm from Chicago. Since I have attended BPS board meetings, I have followed your ever-changing decorum rules, including complying with your recent illegal mask mandate to attend BPS board meetings and wait for mile out of time to speak. Even though I have my disagreements with your recent political and illegal choices, I respect the elected position you hold and have respectfully complied, and my children have too. And now you want to take away my three or one-minute time slot to speak at board meetings. I'm not your enemy and I want your board to come back under DOE compliance so we can move forward as a school community. Until then, I will continue to hold you and your board accountable to comply with the DOE and the law. The bias from the dais is blatant. Madam Chair, you have stated you want us to move forward and create unity, yet you have allowed board members to insult other sitting Brevard County politicians from the dais. I find this request incredulous as you create a deeper divide in our community from the dais. You also allow others to speak about parents who want masks to be optional in very insulting and hurtful ways, including but not limited to personal attacks on our parenting, that we are selfish, that we don't follow science, that we want others to get sick and die, insult our professions, education, and that we are a loud angry mob and that we don't care. That couldn't be further from the truth. And yet you allow others to continue to deeply offend more than half of the people that come to speak at board meetings and your stakeholders who live in Brevard County. As a woman of faith, a wife and a mother, I embrace life and health for myself and others every step of the way. That is why I and many others have brought the other side of the science and mental health of suffering having to wear a mask. There have been practicing doctors, PhDs, and NASA scientists speak to the ineffectiveness of mask-wearing and the developmental harm that it does to minors, as well as it being yet another added barrier to a child's education. Yet this is never talked about amongst board members in the meetings. You have concerns on teacher, social worker, and support staff retention. Remove the mask mandate and do not have a vaccine mandate in the future. That also extends to volunteers. This first step forward will help bridge the gap in our school community as we work together to educate Generation Mars. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. As Charles is approaching our next, sorry. As Charles is approaching our next three speakers will be Julie Bywater, Tristan Takas, and Dahlia Levin. Charles?
Hello, school board members. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Charles Middleton.
Hold on one second, Charles. If you could, we need to raise that so I can hear you on the mic.
There we go.
Thank you.
Good catch. Thank you. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, school board members. It's, uh, I appreciate your time. I'm Charles Middleton. I'm the parent of four children who attend three of Brevard Public Schools, and my wife and I are, are very happy with, uh, with their schools and wonderful teachers and principals who support them. I've been really fascinated by the recent interest in critical race theory, uh, since it's a graduate school topic for, for law students. And, uh, I, I see this outcry and I wonder about, uh, other subjects that could be creeping into our schools such as, uh, partial nonlinear differential equations. You know, we're already teaching calculus and it's a, you know, it's a slippery slope to, to these higher-level classes. I, I'm kidding, of course, but, uh, it's, it's interesting. I think what's really behind critical race theory as a, as a tactic of raising fear is not the subject itself, but rather a, a fear of confronting, uh, the history of this country. And, uh, and that's very troubling. You know, if you have someone you love in your life, a family member with an alcohol problem, uh, you don't love them by ignoring it. You love them by addressing it and, and lovingly caring for them, helping them get through it. American history is full of heroic sacrifices, but also, also devastating atrocities and, and everything in between. If we ignore these realities, uh, we, we imperil the most vulnerable people who have suffered for centuries because of this. Uh, and this problem, of course, is present today. If you've seen the recent data on school performance, uh, from the FSA, um, as broken up by subgroup, um, once again, students of color are way behind white students in performance and, and this, these numbers are devastating. It's, on average, 33% and has been consistent over the last four years, something that should break everyone's heart to, to be able to, have to say to a kindergarten student, you have a 30% chance of even succeeding in these tests. I, I really admire and applaud, uh, Dr. Mullins and their other staff at the district who are taking this matter seriously and, uh, I appreciate the work that's been done. It's, it's a, a recent, uh, historical precedent. This board in the past, of course, was on the other side of this issue, as you also acknowledged in reinstating, um, Harry T. Moore and his wife recently, uh, to undo some of that, that previous damage. I also acknowledge that this, uh, progress is very tenuous and as we become divided over the issues such as critical race theory and let that, um, soak fear of confronting the hard work of overcoming racism, then we could regress to a, a more devastating outcome. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charles. Julie Bywater?
I need to lower it.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Julie Bywater. Um, I want to address you about the public participation at board meetings. I read the red letter, um, item and it says, uh, for agenda items, if there are 10 public speakers or less, each speaker shall have three minutes to adjust the board. If there are 11 to 20, each speaker gets two minutes. If there are 21 or more speakers, each speaker shall have one minute. While I appreciate the board's intention to keep marathon meetings from occurring, limiting the public's ability to speak is not in line with the public's First Amendment right to peacefully address the government for redress of grievances. Three minutes per speaker is fairly standard and I personally know of school boards that allow four minutes per speaker. So, three minutes isn't crazy. Saydell ISD in Des Moines, Iowa allows four minutes per speaker. You all have been elected to do this job. It was not assigned. You sought election and as public representatives are beholden to listen to your constituents, even if it takes an uncomfortably long time, the precedent has already been set by you, the board, by consistently voting to extend the, extend the time for speakers and allowing each person who signed up the opportunity to speak. The school district has limited most interaction on social media. Parents are up here regularly mentioning that their emails fall on deaf ears if that email doesn't align with certain opinions. This is one of our few public avenues left to us to address the entire board on issues. Limiting this more and more further disenfranchises your community and continues to create division. I can agree with limiting commonants to agenda items. I can accept my three minutes of time. I would even accept that you limit speakers to current residents of the county. I wholeheartedly support removing disruptive behavior, though I may not agree on the exact definition of what is actually disruptive. I can support a discussion and what that entails, but the board rarely seeks that public opinion and discussion on these types of topics. Discussion is a two-way street, even if this comment section I am participating in right now is one-way. If these marathon sessions are uncomfortable, perhaps this is not the job for you, though I am not able to actively come to every single meeting. After all, I have three very active teams in this school district. When I attend, I am here until the bitter end. When I can't attend, I'm watching you online, even when I'm in another state. I've watched you from Colorado, Vermont, Boston, and Miami. I expect no less from you. Such drastic changes to the policy deserve greater involvement from the community. There have been no surveys or other public opportunity to address the limiting of public comment. These changes do not serve the community, however, they do shove us out. If this is merely about limiting amount, the time, the amount of time spent at board meetings, maybe board members can limit their own speaking time to about five minutes in order to keep things expeditious. Lead by example. We need you guys and you need us. Thank you.
Thank you. Tristan?
Good evening. My name is Tristan Takas. I'm here to discuss just really one main thing and, um, it's a question I have for you guys. I've been sitting here for a while. Sorry you missed the statement, which is a really good one. The mission is to serve every student with excellence as the standard. So, my question for you is, and I really don't expect an answer, is did you become members of the school board to actually help children or are you trying to push a political agenda? And to me and a few members of the community, it feels the latter. There's been several times where members from other counties have come here to spread their voice, their opinion, instead of you guys listening to us, the local parents that are here in front of you expressing our concerns. And most of these parents are coming out every meeting, sharing the same concerns, but it seems like you guys disregard it. Maybe you guys don't, but that's the appearance of it. A lot of times when you come in and you do your meetings, it does seem like some of you already come in pre, pre, you've pretty much already thought of what your answer is gonna be regardless of public speaking, regardless of other input. Instead of actually having the discussion, you've already had your answer and you're gonna go ahead and vote on it against what parents are, are really expecting. And in my opinion, if you are really trying to push a political agenda and not actually listen to us parents, then I respectfully request you resign and run for a different type of office. Because what really matters most is our children. We are here because our children are our world. We see them day to day. They tell us what's going on in school. We know firsthand what they're experiencing, what their, their friends are experiencing, what other classmates are. We know how it's affecting them. You guys really need to listen to us. It's, it's unfair to use our children as pawns in a political game that doesn't need to be. We really should be focusing on actual learning issues like critical race theory, like getting rid of Common Core, things that really affect the learning of our kids, not dividing our kids. Because now we're having an environment where there are certain kids that are expressing views, political views, that shouldn't be, and it's all coming down from the board. And right now, you guys are showing the example that you, no one has to follow the law. That's not the message which we share in our kids. The law is there to be followed. Everyone needs to follow it and I respectfully request for you guys to follow the law. Thank you.
Thanks, Tristan. As Dahlia is approaching, our next three speakers will be Diana, sorry, you guys probably couldn't hear that. Our next three speakers will be Diana Haynes, David Ganeri, and then Ron McClellan.
Good evening, Distinguished Board of Education for BPS. It's good to see you again and thank you for allowing your citizens to speak. I'm hoping that in the future that you're gonna allow us three minutes, a lot of time, uh, because I think it's not unreasonable, um, to allow us to speak on matters that are pressing, on matters that we care about for our children. So, I'd like to say that and I'd also like to say that we appreciate your leadership. Also, I think it's important to note, as many others have stated, um, at no time would any of us condone violence or threats of violence towards any public servant or school board member, and that includes ones for liberty. We would never condone any kind of violence or acts of violence or threats of violence. And now that I've said that, um, I did want to talk about the Policy Manual of Selection of Instructional Materials and Equipment Objections and Requests for Reconsideration, Code 2520. The board shall select and provide adequate instructional materials as recommended by the superintendent. The board is fully responsible for the content of all instructional materials. Purchase of instructional materials is the responsibility of the superintendent or designee. BPS 10th Grade English 2 provides evidence of critical race theory, page 43. These difficulties highlight the brutality of the oppressor and the spiritual fitness of the oppressed. That is taken directly from the BPS 10th Grade English 2 Literature Teachers Edition book, which I saw with my own eyes. There are many other examples. I don't have time to list here. Dr. Mullins and Dr. McKinnon described the new equity and diversity position in their YouTube Heart-to-Heart video. I strongly encourage everyone to watch it and to take notes. Dr. McKinnon did struggle to define the word equity last night, and that's in her job title. What is the educational purpose to be served by using CRT? CRT objectifies people based on their race. Dr. McKinnon states that she's not implementing policies, she's only reviewing documents for the last year. And, uh, Dr. Sullivan actually said today that parents are not allowed to photograph BPS curriculum because of copyright laws. Why hide? I'm hoping that there will more, be more transparency in the future with the curriculum and, um, I know I'm not the only one that speaks to transparency when it comes to curriculum that is very hurtful and harmful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Haynes? Diana Haynes in the room?
I thought I was next.
Uh, I have Diana first and then David. No worries. Thank you, sir.
I'm here this evening because...
Diana, hold on just one second. I don't have volume on you.
I think if she just moves it over.
Yeah, if you could just, it doesn't need to be touching your lips, but within a couple inches of your lips with the mic, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, can I also regain back my...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm here this evening to speak about a subject that has been prevalent in the news and that you all are aware of, and that is the book that was found in Melbourne High School, Gender Queer. I'm an old lady who's pretty liberal, but I was appalled beyond comprehension because I saw the book. I looked at the pages and I'm not even going to disgrace myself by telling you the statements, the words, the pictures, the filth, the disgust that I see in a book that sits not only on our high school shelves, but on our junior, senior high school, Edgewater, where kids as young as 12 have access to this book. Everybody's morality is at different levels, but this goes beyond that. This goes to deprivation. And at no time does a 12-year-old, 13-year-old, 14-year-old, 15-year-old need to be instructed how to give same-sex oral sex. Not in my lifetime is it going to happen in my school district. I understand these books were pulled. That was great because we all know it probably would have been a publicity nightmare for y'all. But I have pictures from Edgewater Junior High where there are at least 10 books displayed. These aren't hidden on shelves. These are displayed in the middle of the library. What agenda are you guys pushing here? You guys can forget about CRT. That's nothing compared to this. I understand the librarians are responsible for this and this was a big mistake. Nobody, it got ordered by mistake. It got put on the shelf by mistake. I mean, come on, guys. Gender Queer and you didn't open the, nobody opened up the book to take a look at the contents? I don't believe this individual needs to be employed by the Brevard County School System because obviously this individual is not competent in their job in any level. One book is a mistake. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight books displayed in a school is an agenda. And that's what I'm questioning tonight. Are you or are you not going to remove these employees that put these books on our children's library shelf? I also wanted to know if there were any parent committees that oversee the books that are approved for the schools? Because if they're not, maybe there should be. I know as a parent, I would want to know what my child has access to. And if this can slip by to the tune of 10 or 11 books, what else is slipping by?
Thank you, Diana. We appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you.
David?
My name is David Ganeri and I'm here, as many of the parents, to complain about mask mandates. You violated the law. You read all these laws that I have to abide by by being in this meeting. Well, if you don't have to abide by the law, why do I have to abide by law? In fact, I think these officers should be arresting you, quite frankly. Mask mandates are fake science. To identify what fake science is, that's a science that's used every two weeks to change the directives. Not real science. Didn't follow the scientific method. Wearing masks, forcing our children to wear masks in class all day long, every day, is ruining their health. It's not protecting their health. They come home with headaches, sore throats. They come home tired because their oxygen is deprived. Congratulations. You're here as educators, not as medical people. You have taken the parent's right to make medical decisions for our children away from us. That is wrong. You don't have that authority. The little loophole you're using would be more formidable if every other county in this state had drastic changes in their COVID experiences because they are not masking. But you stand alone. You break the law. You break the law. What message does that send to our children? If the leaders of their school break the law, why should they follow the law? You're supposed to be leading by example. I thought core curriculum was the worst thing that you could do to education. Now you've got critical race theory. Congratulations. Another disaster, dividing our children, teaching them to hate each other when you're supposed to be teaching them to love each other. Shame on you. Mask mandates are wrong. They're against the law. You're not following the law, and you're not following the real science. And I charge you with that responsibility. And since you refuse to accept it, I ask that you all resign. You don't deserve to sit there if you're going to break the law blatantly and stand alone in this state as a county of school board mandating things that are against the law. You should be ashamed. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Ron McClellan, and as Ron is approaching, our next three speakers will be Stephanie Anderson, followed by Colin Hall, and then Derek Gennery. Mr. McClellan?
I'm Chair, Representative Board, Dr. Mullins. Been coming to you now for, I think, probably a couple of months, talking about critical race theory. What we're really talking about is the history that we're teaching our children. Historically, we've seen groups outside, seen groups inside. There's a third group. They are not physically present, but their presence, their influence, is being felt. You know, Mark Twain is attributed as saying that "history doesn't always repeat itself, but it often rhymes." And in 19, oh, sorry, 1894, a group of parents, a group of moms got together, and they decided that they wanted to teach their version of history. They wanted to make sure that their truth got out. And they thought that the best way to do that was to talk to school districts and then begin to exert their influence over the publishers of textbooks for children. Their influence became so great that they even had their own committee. It's called the Rutherford Committee. You can reference this, because I sent you my references in an email just before the meeting. But the Rutherford Committee screened textbooks to determine which ones are proper and not proper. These group of moms, their influence, essentially went from 1930 to about 1975 or so. And it is estimated that they influenced somewhere in the range of 69 million students. These students were taught the lost cause method. In case you haven't figured it out yet, I'm talking about the United Daughters of the Confederacy. It's not all negative. I don't have everything negative to say about the Daughters of Confederacy, because I got to tell you, if you ever see the pictures, their hat game was on point. They had it on lock. But I believe that it is imperative to teach real history, not this revisionist history. Same team, same goal, same message. So I encourage you, and I challenge you, to protect the public school systems, to live up to your mission statement, to serve every student with excellence. And excellence means being able to recognize when you're being taught absurdities, because then you will be able to commit atrocities. Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Stephanie Anderson? Going once, going twice? No Stephanie Anderson? All right, Colin Hall?
Hey, everybody. I'm here today to talk about the mask mandate. I have a six-year-old who has yet to go to school without a mask on. He smiles a lot, but he can't see his friends smile. His friends can't see him smile. He's supposed to be learning phonemic awareness and how to read big words and how to say big words. And I believe that the masks and him not being able to see his teacher and his friends' faces when they're all learning these words are stalling out his progression. He mixes up letters and sounds that if he was seeing his teacher's mouth while she was teaching him, he would not mix up those letters and sounds. The American Pediatric Academy had a whole bunch of literature on their website about the importance of children seeing facial expressions. All of that was removed from their website when this COVID thing happened and it became an idea that children should wear masks. This is one of the few countries in the Western world that has their children wear masks. Most of Western Europe does not require any children under the age of 12 to wear masks. My kids have to now. I have a four-year-old that will be going to kindergarten next year, and I hope that she does not have to wear masks. I would like some concrete guidance as to when the mask mandate is going to stop. Is there an amount of community spread? Is there a percentage level of testing that's coming back positive that's required to get rid of this mask mandate in school? I would really like for my kids to go to school without a mask.
Thanks, Colin. Derek, and as Derek's approaching, our last three speakers will be Brad Boils, Megan Woodson, and then Jeffrey Woodson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Derek. I'm going to keep my mask on with you all today. I do appreciate you all being here. I appreciate you have the, and respect that you have the power to fix some of the issues that we're dealing with, with our county. I'm going to point out this photo on our agenda. I mean, this is a photo that I would use. This can't be a photo that you guys can use, right? Need to update this photo of kids with masks on them, right? All these kids are smiling. They look normal. This isn't what our elementary school looks like today. I have young kids as well. I agree with Colin. What is the measure of when the masks will end? You used words today, like breaking down barriers, and started the meeting with unlawful disruption of the school function, needing leadership, and that's where you guys come into play. Make some tougher decisions, free our kids, allow them to be kids. You had to pass a resolution today, afraid of threats from adults. What are these kids dealing with right now? Threats from a school board to have to wear a mask? The COO had his presentation today on safety assessment, security assessment. He didn't talk about a pandemic once. There wasn't a hazard vulnerability. There wasn't measures put into place for thermometers, testing, the impact of wearing a mask for developing children. So freedom of choice. You have that for your kids. Every parent here should have that for their kids. But I definitely expect you to change your photo on your agenda to match what your school district looks like. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Brad?
Hi, everyone. I'm here to support the school board, and I'm all in. I don't have current statistics, but I had approximately, what, 900 cases a month ago, almost 8,000 quarantines. Rates were coming up, 100 more cases a day. I have patients that have lung cancer. They can't get evaluated or treated. They rotate hospitals. One hospital will do a procedure for a week. Like, so Canaveral will be open, then Holmes will be open, then Parrish will be open. So this guy's had cancer five or six months probably by now. I have another guy waiting for a step placement cardiac. Can't get it. Too dangerous in the hospital. Yeah, he probably almost died. They told him he almost died. So this, so what, 8,000 quarantines, what is that? That's a wildfire. What do you do with that? Can't throw water on it. And for people that say these don't work, oh. Have you had surgery? What do you do when you go to surgery? Do you want your doctor without this coughing in your wound? I mean, that's how you get infection. They got gloves on, they're sticking their hands in your body. I don't want to go to have somebody cough in my open abdomen. It's ridiculous. I have the critical race theory, all that. I feel like I'm watching Fox News. Critical race theory, the gentleman said, a tall, good-looking bald man. Had in graduate school, law school. It's not an issue. I feel like a lot of people want religion back in schools. First Amendment unfortunately will allow us to not discriminate. So if you teach one religion, you're discriminating against many others. So you have that balance. The last thing, and this is very upsetting to me. I found out I can look at my phone on social media, and I can find people threatening Jennifer Jenkins, going to her house, following her in cars. Nothing's done. I thought assault was a crime in this state, but I don't see any action ever taken. So I think we need to support our, and if you're doing things like that, you're not a patriot. You're a coward. And as a member of this community, I can't tolerate that. And I hope our community can't either. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Megan?
Hello. My name is Megan Woodson. I'm a citizen of Titusville here in Beavard County. I'm recently a licensed foster parent. I vote. My tax dollars help pay for the school system, and I had to take time off of work to get here on time. Less than 400 minors have died from COVID through the entire pandemic. This represents only 0.0005% of the 74 million minors in the United States. The New York Times falsely published last week that 900,000 minors have been hospitalized with COVID-19, but they were quickly forced to correct their article to 49,000. In other terms, this is only 0.06% of the minor population in the U.S. Based on those statistics, it is easy to conclude that children are not a group of people who are at risk. That being said, COVID-19 is not a burden that children should have to bear. When I send my foster children to school, I will be sending them there to learn math, science, reading, history, and how to make friends. Constantly correcting a young child on how to wear their mask properly takes time and energy away from them learning those basic subjects and how to be a good friend. I will not send them to a school for you to burden them with the fear of people dying when those people who are at risk of dying are now able to get themselves vaccinated. It is not a child's job to protect anyone from anything. It is our job as adults to protect them. Their only job should be to learn and to do their best. Also, you are taking away the parents' decision-making authority by mandating masks for every child. Every child is different, and every family is different. It should be the parents' responsibility to assess their family's situation and make the best decision for their family regarding COVID-19. Therefore, I ask you to allow parents to opt their children out of mask mandates. To the board member who has been receiving threats, I've recently learned of the kind of hate you have been enduring because of your position on this issue. And I am so sorry, and I cannot imagine what you and your family are going through. I do not affiliate myself with that group, because they are going about this the wrong way. I am so sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan. Jeffrey? You guys are like frozen in this podium thing all of a sudden. Right?
Thank you. I want to start by saying that I empathize with the fear that has been unfairly thrust upon your families. Being forced to feel like your life and your family's lives are in danger is not right. And that's the exact reason why I'm here now, to ask you, why are we, as a county, pushing the same existential traumas on our children every day? Why are we crippling the next generation and permanently traumatizing these small children by teaching them that the air is poison? And that if they don't wear a muzzle or a face covering, that they will be responsible for killing their teachers, killing their peers, their parents, and their grandparents? What kind of sick society places these burdens on small children? Less than 400 minors have died from COVID-19 in the United States. This pandemic is not their burden to bear. We've known from the beginning that it's not dangerous for kids. Forcing children to wear masks does not protect them. It saddles them with lifelong burdens of diminished health, delayed learning, and psychological harm. How would you feel if I told you that your child's school was forbidding all smiling? What psychological effect would you expect that to have? If such a policy would horrify you, I implore you to take a hard look in the mirror at the policies that you've put in place. As a recently licensed foster parent, I do not have the option to withdraw the children in my care from the public schools. So in order to protect them and speak up for them, as well as the other children in the county, I'm here to ask you to allow parents to opt out of the mask mandates and to vigilantly protect the rights of parents against burdens of masks and vaccine mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board members, we have four discussion items this evening. Are you all good pushing through the discussion items? Does anyone need a break before we go into those?
I'm good. It's getting real long and windy.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is board member reports. Do we have any board member reports outside of the four discussion items that are on the agenda that need to take place? Okay.
We talked about the
Mike?
Well, we can, no, we can come bring it up in which she talks about the mask. I'll put it in there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's conclusive in there.
Okay. So no board member reports outside of the discussion items that are listed? All right. So that's going to take us into our first discussion item, and that is you, Mr. Susie, on the teacher's safety.
Yeah, thank you so much. So what we have here is this culture out there that has wrapped around our teachers, and I kind of, it makes me really upset, right? And where that going is, is start out with the devious lick stuff that now has moved into actually having it to where if you touch a teacher's rear end, that you get, that's the next points, right? And then the next piece after that is if you kiss a friend's girlfriend or whatever it is. This is all that TikTok stuff, right? And our teachers, what I'm trying to get at is, is that when we were at the FSBA Board of Directors meeting, we heard from across the state that they're getting, teachers that are getting hit with this. And it's absurd. It's absurd that we allow, first off, that TikTok's even allowed to do this, that they don't control it as much as they do. But it's absurd that our teachers have to go through the fact that they come to school every day in the middle of a pandemic, and they're concerned about that, right? And I just kind of wanted to, I wanted to touch on the teacher's safety piece and talk about the fact that Dr. Mullins and the union have gotten together and they're working on identifying any of the issues that the teachers actually have, that they're concerned about with their safety and stuff like that. And I just wanted to take a second and tell, and give opportunity to Mullins or anybody to just say that we appreciate our teachers and that what they're going through right now and some of the safety concerns. I had a couple of friends that had mentioned that they, that this was disturbing, right? That was going on, and that we needed to react for them. So I wanted to take a minute, put this on here, and say that I, we care about you and that we're here for you and we will defend you when it comes time. Is that good? Is that good?
Yeah, I would just echo that, Mr. Susan. Our administrators are remaining aware of, quite frankly, I don't even know how to express the disappointment with TikTok supporting or propagating this movement. But I want to assure our teachers, that our administrators have our support in holding students accountable if they choose this kind of unacceptable behavior. So we've certainly communicated that to our administrators. We hail our teachers as the heroes that they have been, that they are, and they will continue to be for our kids and support them through this time and moving forward. And appreciate our administrators continuing to be vigilant in their work with their staff and so on, so.
That's all.
And I would just, did you guys want to speak or?
I just wanted to say.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I did not know this, any one idea was going on TikTok. This is new. So this is, everything else that our teachers are dealing with, it's incredible that they have to deal with this too. So they certainly have all of our support and I so appreciate all they're doing. And they go above and beyond right now because we are short staff with teachers right now, so.
Do all, I'm sorry to interrupt, do all the principals know that the sheriff has given a $25 reward to anybody who? We sent that to the principals, they know that?
We do communicate that to our principals that are aware of the.
Just fired up over this.
The crime line, the hotline, yes.
And I appreciate you guys getting together with the teachers' union to make sure that everything's secure and everything else.
And I would, I would just ask that our parents support us in that as well. If you are a parent of a child in private public schools and you've not yet had a conversation about the whole TikTok phenomenon, and I would just encourage those conversations because you're right.
It's assault and it's like, it's sexual assault when they do that and they can go away for a long time and they might think it's a joke and then they're done, you know? Anyways, sorry.
I would ask, or I would also acknowledge that there had been some strong community responses against and, I don't know, even more than discouraging, just rebuking that kind of conduct. And I think that needs to be the stronger message, that our community will not tolerate that kind of behavior as well. So I do want to acknowledge our community as well that has already come out, not just Brevard, but across the country and is saying this is unacceptable, so.
Absolutely. Ms. Campbell, I have you next. I don't know, was there anything additional on the FSBA?
Just, yeah, just a couple of minutes. The biggest part, the longest part, I should say, was the NSBA letter conversation that we had. But a couple of other things that came up while we were meeting. We had Shayla Kennedy from Orange County Public Schools. She's also the president of Sunspur and I can't remember what that stands for, but it's the Organization of Public Relations School in the state of Florida. She led a session called Innovate for Equity and she is working with the Equity Committee for FSBA, which is open. They, if anybody's interested, they were asking for new members. You just have to look on that, you know, contact probably Andrea Messina with FSBA and she can get you in contact with them. But there was a statement that she challenged us with as we are looking, as FSBA is trying to shape their own statement on that. But for all of us, and this, I'll just kind of give a quote. We need to ask the people whom our initiatives affect the most, is this fill-in-the-blank policy action going to have the impact that we intend? So there's always, you know, each action sometimes have unintended consequences and the people that are trying to help the most, we need to ask the question of them. Is this action going to have the impact that we intend? I think that was good to move forward. And just wanted, this was really impactful, so I wanted to share this with you as well. On the second afternoon, we had Dr. Mike Martin, who is the president of Florida Gulf Coast University, which is there in Fort Myers where we were, come in really as a motivational speaker. But there were four things that he challenged us with at the end. I think that were good takeaways for us and then I'll just, I'll end with this. Number one, public education is too valuable to damage. Take that however you want. It is valuable to all of us. And regardless, we talked in our workshop this morning about the number of scholarships and, you know, voucher programs, whatever. But the majority of our students continue to be educated in our public schools and it is something and they are going to be our leaders. So regardless of how we feel about homeschool and charter school and private and vouchers and all that, we need our public schools to, they're too valuable to damage. Number two, he said, honor teachers as leaders in the community. I think during the pandemic, we did a lot of that, but we need to continue to elevate that position. It would help, hopefully help with our recruiting, right? And having people go into education programs as we honor that position. And number three, model better behavior for those we encounter. He spent a lot of time talking about the civility project that they have there on their campus. And really, just to borrow his example, that, you know, sometimes sitting down with a cup of coffee with someone can avoid lawsuits, other kind of arbitrations. Sometimes we just need to sit down and have that cup of coffee and go back to having meetings with civility. But that modeling the better behavior, it was really important. And then number four, resist the temptation to get pulled into the political vortex. So it was, it was good encouragement and I made some notes to myself of some conversations that I needed to have around some of our controversial issues, just one-on-one. I don't drink coffee, so I'll have to find something else, around a slice of pumpkin bread, to have those conversations. But it was really good, really good words for all of us and I just wanted to share those and that was all.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anyone need to comment or comment on any of that? Okay, so our next discussion item brings us to our mask policy board of education decision. I believe, Ms. Campbell, that was your request as well.
Yes, and I'm going to limit my discussion of this because I found out we have not received our letter, our official statement from the Board of Education after their decision last Tuesday. And I think there may be some, unless you got it, you got it this afternoon?
Yes, it came in late this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to review it in detail, but I'll be sharing it with general counsel and certainly share it with the board once we get through the meeting tonight and have more assessment of that in the coming days.
All right, well, that changes some things. So it is my understanding from my conversation with Dr. Mullins this afternoon and from the meeting itself that our district had 48 hours from the receipt of the letter. At first I thought it was from the meeting, but it's from the receipt of the letter, is that correct, Mr. Gibbs? To respond with either how we're going to comply or with the salaries of the board members? That was, I don't know what this particular letter says, but the 48-hour timeline starts from when he received the letter, not from the meeting last week, correct?
The letters that I know of that went out to Broward and Alachua, that's the way it was worded. I have not seen the letter that was, we got today, so I don't know.
So I, you know, as I mentioned in my email, asking for this to be as a discussion point, as a member of the losing side on the vote, according to Robert's rules, I can't request for us to recall or reconsider the decision that was made last Tuesday. However, that decision does impact all of us. And so I think that once we look at the letter, we're, you know, it needs to be a board decision as much as we are allowed in the letter to decide what we're going to do with the results, with the consequences of that. I would ask for my fellow board members to please reconsider. And again, it's not about, it was not about salary to begin with, but we are going to have to deal with, it's not, it wasn't about salary. Why, I know that I made my decision and I believe that you guys felt the same way as well. But we're going to have to decide how we're going to deal with those consequences when they, if they come down in a letters approach. So I'm assuming they have come down. So personally, the only thing I want to insert into this this evening, as far as just putting my opinion on one thing, is that I don't think we should pursue any federal grants. I think that is a hornet's nest. We're already in one. I think that would be adding another. And the State Board of Education has already made it very clear about what they're going to do if we do pursue that. And it's just not a battle I'm willing to step into the middle of and I hope that my fellow board members feel the same.
Mr. Susan?
Okay, so thank you for that. I wanted to add another little piece to it. So I pulled the data going back, all the way back to the beginning of the pandemic and looked at it on every day, every seven-day rolling average, kind of like where it runs. And I was, I got thrown back for a second because from September 14th, 2020, to May 26th, 2021, we were never below 50, right? Like if you look at it, we never got below 50 per 100,000 and all that stuff. So literally for inwards of close to a year, we never got there. The only time since September 14th of 2020 that we've been below 50 has been for a little bit less than a month, from 526 to 624. So I'm concerned with the fact that we are coming back to, that we're saying we're going to do the mask mandate until we hit the 50, right? That we might not ever get there, or if we do, that we're going to start rolling that back and forth. I understand that you're, this is your decision to stay at 50. My only concern is, is if we hover like 50 to 60 here, 50, 70, we might want to revisit it. The other thing is, is that when I'm looking at the data going like that, we might go down to 35, up to 60, you know what I mean? So we just need to figure out, I'm just concerned about the seesaw that I've mentioned in fact before. But I, the good news is that I was looking at the percentages going up and then going down. So every time it was reported on the seven-day and then every time it started coming down. And it looks like by the time it's Friday, when the next report comes out, if percentages are consistent, we're going to hit 50. So the main part of my conversation was, we've given Dr. Mullins the opportunity to make that decision if it hits 50. Is it the intent of Dr. Mullins that if it does hit 50, that he will notice for like next Monday? If it was Friday and it was done, that we're going to get rid of the masks? Does that make sense to you? Or that we're going to opt out, however that works? I was wondering if we could get some clarification? And then going forward, if it goes up the next week, are we going to go back, you know what I mean? Go back and forth. It's just something to think about ahead of time so we're not like this. I think we're real close, but I did look at the data. I'm concerned about that long period where we never even hit it. So if you guys could give me a little bit there. And I'm sorry, it's part of your discussion.
Yeah, was that meant to anything? Dr. Mullins, would you like to address what your preference would be for moving forward once we hit that 50 per 100,000? How do you, how do you envision that going?
Yeah, I'll give my interpretation of the direction that the board gave at the last meeting and I will ask general counsel to weigh in on or to provide the interpretation of policy if numbers go back above 50. We receive from the Florida Department of Education an updated report every Friday, typically late afternoon Friday, of the current numbers that are reported to the DOH respective of each district or county. We evaluate, we receive that report as soon as it's released. It identifies Brevard on that report. That is the report I was, I understand the board directed me to utilize in evaluating the community spread of COVID. I believe, if my memory serves me correct, the report for this past Friday for Brevard was 83 per 100,000. So to Mr. Susan's point, we are approaching that. The week before that, I believe it was 123, six. So certainly things are moving in the right direction. I am working with staff right now in finalizing a parent opt-out form that would be made available to parents online to be prepared in the instance that we reach 50 per 100,000. We'll certainly evaluate that this Friday when the report comes out. I anticipate that we, as soon as we have that report, if it hits 50, we would make the report available, or excuse me, the parental opt-out form available to our parents immediately and they would be able to submit that the following Monday for their students if that was their parental choice for their student. So I, I'm preparing for a very quick turnaround. My staff is working on that even as we speak. In terms of if it goes back up over 50, Mr. Gibbs, could you present or describe to the board the implementation of the policy in that instance?
And if it rebounds to go over 50 again, there is no provision for re-implementation of masks without board action. So the board would have to affirmatively take action. And I'll remind the board, we only have the emergency policy in place until November 30th. That's the drop dead for the emergency policy. You'll have to undertake rulemaking after that.
Mr. Gibbs, since you're on that point, we've already got you on mic. Could you also clarify the expiration of the DOH rule that has been so very much in question?
Right, DOH has passed their rules under the same rulemaking that we do. They can do emergency rules, just like the DOE, and then they're supposed to undertake rulemaking to extend that rule. DOE has already, for their two emergency rules, implemented notice of rulemaking and are in the process of approving their rules and making them permanent rules. DOH, to my knowledge, has not made any efforts to publish or undertake actual rulemaking for their emergency rule. So they have 90 days. I don't know what calendar they're running off of because obviously I don't work for them. But they have 90 days, so from their original emergency rule publication date, I think they came out in the beginning of August, right before school started when the emergency rules came down. So they have three months from that date potentially before their rules expire as well. So the emergency DOH rule is likely coming up on its timeframe. And if they don't remove it, it would be susceptible to rulemaking challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. I just, that wasn't something that we as a board had discussed to my recollection. So I just, while we were talking timelines, I just wanted to get that out there. So, Mr. Susan, did that, did that answer your question sufficiently?
Yeah, I just, our parents just constantly worried about changing back and forth because there's some people that are in favor of the mask mandate that are concerned about it going away, right? And vice versa. I would just ask the board that after the 50s goes and this thing goes away, that we look to the future for consistency. When I looked at the other numbers going back, they came back up on another spike. We've seen these, right? We are going to have another one. We are going to go above 50. We know that's coming. We just need to have it to where we're not in this turmoil and we can set direction for our people. And whether we disagree on what it is in the end, that's the direction that we go. That's all. I just asked him that. The other thing I was going to say is, is that Orange County and many of the other counties are now opened up to homecomings and events. We're now getting close to the 50. Dr. Mullins, I don't know, but it was the direction that if the numbers came down, that we would relook at allowing, you know, events and dances and stuff like that. I didn't know, for me, I thought that once we hit 50, we could allow that. And I just, I mean, I was getting texts today from across the state of the different counties allowing their people to start doing their events, right? We also should talk about that because we do have a couple of football games left that could be homecomings. And we could save this for the kids, some of their, some of their dreams are to have a homecoming. And although, you know. So I wanted to discuss that real fast, since we're inside that scope.
Dr. Mullins, would you like to address the, I need to ask a point of clarification, but yours might be shorter than mine with Mr. Susan's previous request.
Well, first, I would, I would just clarify that we have not prohibited homecoming activities and festivities. Several of our schools have hosted all of the homecoming festivities along the way. The only, the only element that was restricted was a traditional dance with a DJ and that sort of thing. So that is still not permitted, but other spirit weeks, some of our schools have put together some very creative events for students to make it celebratory and, you know, have festivities for students. That's certainly permitted and encouraged. I have had some school sponsors request, when would reconsideration of dances be made? And I indicated that once we were in a situation that there was not a mask requirement for all students and staff, we'd revisit it. So when we, when we hit that place, then we'll revisit it. I think we have to keep in mind that planning, in the event we get there and that restriction is lifted, planning an event like that takes a considerable amount of time and coordination and so on. So I don't want to put concern in our sponsors' minds. Um, so I don't want to put concern in our sponsors' minds at this moment that all of a sudden they're going to be expected to put a, a large, to keep in mind that typically a homecoming dance is open to the entire school and is upwards of six to eight hundred, pushing sometimes a thousand students participating in that very restrictionless kind of activity. So I want to do some caution to our sponsors that, you know, we'll work with them when that time comes and a reasonable timeframe and so on. Uh, the other concern that was expressed was homecomings serve as a considerable fundraising opportunity for classes uh, moving forward. And I, when the decision, when I made the decision to restrict dances, I re- I uh, informed Dr. Sullivan to reassure our principals, just like we did last year with athletics, when our schools experienced uh, reduced gate receipts, we supplemented schools athletic programs more than we normally do to account for the loss of revenue in sports, and I made a commitment to at least revisit and understand how schools may be financially impacted from the results of not being able to have a homecoming dance. And I reassured uh, this, a couple of the sponsors that reached out to me actually of that as well. So um, we'll, we'll get, we'll absolutely do that to make sure that our schools are able to uh, support our students, our kids, moving forward with as much of the activities as we possibly can, and even the financial implications down the road. Did I cover everything you were going to, Mrs. Palford?
I'll wait until you go though.
No, I was just, I was just going to see if you needed a-
Yeah, I would just like to allow the kids, under whatever restraint we have, whether that's a mask mandate or a opt-out mask mandate. I, I truly believe we're at a point where these numbers are going to hover right where they are. There's stadiums full of eighty thousand kids. We have kids playing sports. There's, there's just, there's just, it's, it's, it's different out there right now. And I really feel strongly that if we allow them to, if they can, this is an option open to you, um, that you guys can actually, that we allow our schools to function in the normal amount. We're going to get to a point where we have to, the numbers never got below, what is it? Thirty-five? I think that's what I'm looking at here from the, from the DOH numbers. Yeah, until, uh, yeah. Going in the last year and a half, they've never gotten below that, like thirty, thirty-five. So w- this is going to be around us, the memories of our children having an opportunity to be in that scope, allowing us to get back to being normal, the mental health of our community, all of that. I'd like to allow them to do that. Um, I'm hearing that we're going to have some restrictions. I would just like to say to the staff that, or to our school board to give direction that in the event that we come, that the mask mandate is dropped, or even now if it's not, that we allow them to host normal um, homecoming, just in that, that scope. Even if there are six hundred kids in there dancing and stuff like that, we got to get back to normal. And I just don't know when that's going to be. That's all. So we don't have to vote on it. It's not an official vote. It's just direction. So we can do that here. I'm not letting you say no to me. Well, I know you guys are uncomfortable. I didn't mean it to do this, but I just started getting the texts right before the meeting, and it, the pictures of all the kids' homecomings throughout the state got me a little sideways. That's all.
Can I, does anyone, I, okay. Um, and I respect that, Mr. Susan. I absolutely get where you're going with that. The only thing um, that I would suggest is, I, I think, and I, you know, Dr. Mullins alluded to it. If this board gives direction that we should go back to unrestricted activity, which is what I'm hearing you asking, um, number one, I fear it's going to be an absolute um, moment of panic for our school-based leaders, because they do not have an opportunity to prep for that. So if we say, when we hit fifty per hundred thousand, we would like for the superintendent to, and, and our secondary leading and learning folks, and our elementary leading and learning folks to work with our principals to develop the path forward with as limited restrictions as possible. Like, I think that's one thing. Um, but as, as he said, you know, planning a homecoming dance is not, it, it, it doesn't necessarily happen overnight, and the same people that are going to be planning that homecoming dance are the people who are, already have their, their plates full at school. So not against what you're saying. I just want to make sure that we are not, that if we are giving direction, we are giving clear, rational direction, um, and that we provide opportunity for that to be thought through. So um, I, you know, my recommendation would be, you know, I, I, I would suggest that Dr. Mullins is aware of the desire to get back to normalcy as soon as we are able, as soon as it's feasible for us to do so, and perhaps give him some time to think through it, um, and speak with his team, and then come back to us with his recommendation. Um, and I think certainly there's opportunity for dialogue around that. I just hesitate for us to say, make this happen, and us have those unintended consequences that Ms. Campbell was talking about earlier.
So the unintended, let me just get it right. The unintended consequences are that we're not sure if staff would be able to push, organize it, get it out quick enough. They're already set. And what else? I just, that way I can mitigate through it.
Yeah, I, I just think there's, I, I think that there needs to be an opportunity for Dr. Mullins and his team to have conversation with our school-based leaders-
Okay.
-so that we can understand all the potential unintended consequences from their perspective. And I, you know, it, if we had said, hey, we're going to talk about homecoming, and they had had an opportunity to have those conversations, I think it would be different. Um, but the fact that it's just coming up now, I just feel really strongly, like we need to take that opportunity to have those conversations so we can plan appropriately and not create a, a huge mess.
Dr. Mullins, can you give me kind of a time run of how that works? Um, so we say it hits the fifty, right? You have to go to your school-based leaders to come up with best practices. Um, you think something could happen before Christmas?
Can I?
Well, the end of football season for most teams is uh, se- uh, is uh, November fifth. Chances they have a homecoming, a home game on November fifth are very slim, right? Um, so the earliest Xavier could have is October twenty-ninth, which is two weeks. There's no way they could do that. And to ask our schools to put together something in three weeks, that's, you know what I mean? It's just difficult. But there might be something that we can do in that scope to allow kids to gather, to dance, to be normal. Um, is that something we could do by Christmas? Before Christmas break? That's all. I'm sorry.
I, I'm uncomfortable giving un, you know, unfair expectations of, you know, I don't, I don't want to give our kids un- unfair expectations of when that's going to be. I give, I will give this commitment, that we evaluate it on an ongoing basis as cabinet. Virtually every Monday when we have cabinet meeting. We are currently in a mask mandate situation for students and staff while indoors. Um, I, I am, and that's the direction, that is the board policy, that I am responsible to enforce and uphold as are our administrators. So to put our administrators in the res- in the environment of supervising students, in an environment that would be, that is, let's be honest, a traditional dance is in direct conflict with a mask requirement. So um, and then, so to give any expectation of lift, uh, considering a traditional dance before we have worked out of the mask requirement, I, I'm not comfortable making that timeline when I don't know, I can't ma- I, I agree with you. I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm optimistic that this Friday will be the, the decision point, that we can move forward. I assure you, it'll be on my agenda with cabinet Monday morning. And I meet with the, we have a board workshop, I believe, on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Um, if there's an opportunity to provide the, the board an update after my conversation with cabinet on Monday, we see what happens on Friday. I don't have a problem, you know, having as an ongoing update to the board, but to say, oh yeah, by Christmas, we can definitely make that happen. I, I'm not comfortable putting out, putting that out to our kids, and then I got to go back to them and say, oh, sorry, I will make the commitment to continually evaluate it and try and work toward the same thing we did last year, which was we were always working to yes, to get to yes. And that's my uh, commitment in this situation as well.
I just think if you look at where we are as a society now, as opposed to where we were last year even this time, um, we're in a different place. Like, it is a different world. So thank you, Dr. Mullins. I'm sorry I didn't tell you ahead of time. That was rude of me. Um, it's just something that came up and with the conversation. Um, thank you for going through that with me. What we do is, I, I think it's going to be close, but it's probably not going to hit the fifty or less. It'll probably be like fifty-six, fifty-seven, something like that, looking at the percentages. But at least we're starting to talk that conversation through, and at least we all kind of start thinking in our minds so that we can make a decision. So thank you. That's all.
So Mr. Susan, if I could, I just want to circle back on one thing that you said um, with regard to, I don't even know which, if it was a specific discussion, I think it was, I think it started from Katie's discussion point. But you said that you felt like we needed to establish what was going to happen going forward. So-
It was discussed on Tuesday.
Are you asking, well, and, and the reason it becomes important is because the, the, the policy as presented is going to be ending and doesn't address, it only addresses the metric for removing, transitioning to a, a parental opt-out on the mask policy. So-
It ends in November is what you're saying.
Right. And then it ends in November. That policy is no longer applicable going forward.
I like that, but I'm afraid that we might revisit it, and if we do, I just wanted you to consider that. That's all.
And so that's my question is, are you requesting that we have discussion establishing metrics at which point we may reinstitute a mask policy?
Oh, eh, eh, H no.
Okay.
I didn't swear. H no.
Okay. I just-
But I just wanted everybody to think that, put that into consideration, that as we move forward, that that, please look at the data, it's on the, on the, on the site. Um, those numbers seem to not go that low, so that's all.
Okay. So there's, there's no request for additional discussion around that?
Oh, no.
Item? Okay.
Nope. But I just want you guys moving forward, us not to do this.
Okay. I just didn't want to not follow through if that was the require, if that was the, if I heard what I thought I heard, I didn't want to not follow through, but-
Perfect.
Okay. Um, Ms. Campbell, do you need any additional discussion at this point? Are you requesting anything official? Are you?
Oh yeah, we're back to your thing.
Do you want me to move on?
Sorry. Come on, Campbell.
Hi. I had comments about, I mean, obviously, we're going to request a grant from, the state grant from the federal government. That would have to come before the board to do that.
Right. And Dr. Mullins said he wasn't looking into that the last time I talked to him.
Fine. Um, I guess there's not any other movement on that right now.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so the whole point of this discussion item from Ms. Campbell was to talk about the decision that was made and the letter that was being sent. None of us have seen the letter yet. I think she's perfect, perfectly correct to say that we should have a conversation about it after we read it. Um, and so I don't, I don't know why we're avoiding that, but I mean, I agree with you. That's what we need to do. We need to sit down as board and have a conversation about it and decide where we're going forward, but we can't predict what was going to happen. We haven't even read the letter yet. Um, so thank you, Ms. Campbell.
So are we moving on to our last discussion point? Okay.
More?
Yes, it's yours.
That's right. Yes, one more. All right. So um, volunteers, and Dr. Mullins, I did talk to you about this one, so it's not that bad. Um, so what we have is, I made a big, hey, let's all get a, go volunteer last week, right? And what some of the people came back and said, they're not letting us into the school, we're not being allowed to be volunteering and everything else. So I asked Dr. Mullins, I said, hey, how can we make this work? Like, we all know, here's one of the problems that we have, and I had a discussion with the gentleman that comes up here with the camouflage, his name's Matthew, and he had said, look, man, like, some of the teachers don't need you to show off. Like, they just don't need you to go into the classroom, um, because you're just going to be an impediment sometimes. And as a former teacher, I know exactly what that's like. Like, you have to come up with something to do for them while they're in there. Okay, that's great. But there are a lot of things to do at the school, right, Dr. Mullins? Like, you could talk about media specialist help and, and I, I mean, I'll go mow grass, right? There's a lot of stuff that our schools need, that our principals, I am going to do that next year. Well, I'm going to mow grass. I'm doing it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anyways-
Risk management is having a heart attack right now, Mr. Susan.
Let them have a heart attack.
Please do not encourage our community members to go and mow grass.
But the thing is, is that there's a lot of things that we can do, okay? Dr. Mullins, we talked about this. I'm sorry, I'm going to give you the floor a little bit.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, Mr. Susan. And, and actually, I was at an event last night where it was suggested that our schools are restricted to uh, you know, the suggestion of volunteers, which is not, which has never been the case since we started the school year. So we are allowing volunteers on our campuses in, with the expectation, the requirement that they work with the principal, the administration, for an agreed up, uh, you know, an acknowledged, recognized, planned and purposeful uh, activity on campus. So uh, encourage our community to reach out to the schools and make yourself available to volunteer and work with the administration on a planned and purposeful uh, activity, not the least of which is our media centers. Certainly could use volunteers to help with checking out books and re-shelving and so on. Uh, in fact, we are so supportive of volunteers, we have paid for the renewal of our volunteers to go through the background screening. So uh, there is no cost to go through the background uh, screening process for our community, and so we're working toward the mobile background screening process. I don't have a, a update on that for the board this evening. I, I can for our next meeting. Uh, but I do know that community can come in through our security office here, as they always have. The fee is waived, and we'll go through that process and get folks set up to support our schools.
So um, thank you for that, Dr. Mullins. Um, you can help the media center, you can make copies, you can do all those things, right? Um, but I want to tell you guys one thing. There are some schools that don't really need the help as much as others. And one of the reasons that I was requesting this was not so much to go to certain schools, but to get to our Title I schools. Our Title I schools need the help. They need the support. We talked about the education drop, right? We talked about the gaps. That's where they're the greatest. And I, I will tell you right now that the, the, the parental support in some of our Title I schools is not what it is in some of the other schools like Vera Sundry. So when you go in, like, PTOs are sometimes run by teachers because there's not a lot of support. And that's because a lot of those families are working, right? But here's what it is. We need to get into the Title I schools to assist. So when you're making that decision, please look at those. Now, I went through the volunteer process just to do it. Um, I signed my wife up just in case, but I didn't actually sign her because the final disclaimer says that you, you agree the statement of admission information request will be reserved. Sounds really bad. But I just went through it all the way to the end so that I could see the process. It takes less than ten minutes. The one thing that I would like is if there's somehow, that if somebody types in, you might have volunteers that don't even know what schools are close to them. I don't know how a volunteer would find out, because we're not just talking about parents. I've been, I've been getting a lot of requests from people that are in there, that are retired military, that just said, hey, I saw what you were saying, I'd like to come in. But they just don't know, like, the schools and stuff like that, they're listed there. Um, but is the best thing for them to just look on a map or look up schools in my area? You know what I mean? Like, how do they know what schools to go give a, volunteer if they're not a part of a school? Like, they're not part of their family?
Well, we'll first come up here and get background checked, start that process. Our wonderful customer service folks at the front can assist them in identifying the school that's near them. Or uh, folks can go on our website and use the bus finder uh, tool. Put in your, put in your address.
Okay.
It'll show you where bus stops are in the area and the schools in the area, and then you can go to the schools tab and contact that school and uh, have a conversation with the principal.
When you sign up online, it asks you what, that was all. That's why I was saying that. So-
Our, our folks, our customer service folks, TJ, Ms. Pat, uh, Ms. Chick, um, Lynn, Ms. Bicalala would love to help our community connect with a school.
Okay. That would conclude my volunteer one. I have nothing else. I think she has something.
Yeah, I just want to say something. Um, so uh, I appreciate that, Mr. Susan, and I appreciate anyone who wants to come to volunteer at any school. I would actually probably make the statement that every single school probably needs volunteers. Um, and if we have any parents out there that are willing to volunteer, and you know, they're aware of what their local school is, and they know there's a lot of participation there, and they want to spread that wealth, um, I think it's important for you to get involved with your PTO, who can then get involved with hopefully some other PTOs. Um, and that will give you a really good idea of what schools might be lacking that parental involvement. So we can't assume which schools are lacking parental involvement, but absolutely those PTOs are engaged. They know, they usually are talking to their neighborhood schools, or they have a school that they might support as well, um, and help out that other PTO. Um, so that's a really good way for you to kinda spread out, spread your wealth if you're willing to volunteer across.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Um, Dr. Mullins, we had spoken briefly earlier about an overview of the, um, kinda the, the state board process. You still may want me to do that? Do you want to postpone that for further discussion? What's your preference?
Uh, since we're, in light of just receiving the, the state board of education order late this afternoon, um, we can postpone that for now. Um, I, I think there'll be more information to share once that's reviewed and know what the next steps are.
Okay.
Um, so-
All right. I would concur. I just didn't wanna not address, so. All right, unless somebody has something else, then I do believe that, uh, Mr. Gibbs is flagging me. He needs our, go ahead, Mr. Gibbs.
All right. Uh, board members, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the case of Lenora West, the school, versus the school board of Brevard County, Florida case number zero five, two thousand eighteen, CA zero five five two zero eight, pursuant to two eighty-six point oh one one, Florida statutes known as the Government and Sunshine Act. I'm requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation and/or compromise of said claim. I will ask the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons intending to be published. It is suggested that the attorney-client session be held October nineteenth at eleven AM. As required by the statute, only the following individuals will be present. Misty Belford, board chair, Matt Susan, vice chair, Katie Campbell, school board member, Jennifer Jenkins, school board member, Cheryl McDougal, school board member, superintendent Dr. Mark Mullins, Paul Gibbs, general counsel, Michael Bowling, Esquire, Roper, PA. I will ask a court reporter to record the session also as required by statute. Her notes will be trans- fully transcribed and filed with clerk of the school board. Upon conclusion of the litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. You don't need any direction or response from us, right? We just had to read that into the record?
Your, your part of the thing is I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two eighty-six point oh one one-
Is that in my book someplace?
... to discuss pending claim.
Pam's coming to my rescue. Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you, Pam.
Sounds good. Well done.
No. I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two eight six point zero one one, Florida statutes, to discuss a pending claim. If there are no objections, I will instruct our attorney to schedule the attorney-client session to be held October nineteenth, starting at eleven AM, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. Are there any objections? Mr. Gibbs, please move forward with scheduling.
Okay, thank you. Board members, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the workers' compensation case, Brian Ordner versus the school board of Brevard County, Florida, case number zero six one three dash zero one six three, pursuant to two eighty-six point oh one one, Florida statute known as the Government and the Sunshine Act. I am requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation and/or compromise of said claim. I will ask the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons intending to be published. It is suggested that the attorney-client session be held October nineteenth immediately following the attorney-client session regarding Lenora West versus school board of Brevard County at eleven AM. As required by this statute, only the following individuals will be present. Misty Belford, board chair, Matt Susan, vice chair, Katie Campbell, school board member, Jennifer Jenkins, school board member, Cheryl McDougal, school board member, superintendent Dr. Mark Mullins, Paul Gibbs, general counsel, William Rogner, Esquire, the HR law firm. I will ask a court reporter to record the, the session also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed upon, filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two eight six point zero one one, Florida statutes, to discuss a pending claim. If there are no objections, I will instruct our attorney to schedule the attorney-client session to be held October nineteenth, starting immediately after the conclusion of the attorney client session regarding Lenora West versus school board of Brevard County at eleven AM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. Any objections?
If I say no, am I saying no to Gibbs? The only time I can ever say no to him. Or am I saying no to you?
Are there any objections, Mr. Susan? This is the perfect time to say no. You have no objection.
But it'll pass, right, board members? I object to Paul's recommendation.
No.
Okay. All right. I approve.
Hearing no objection, Mr. Gibbs, please move forward with scheduling the executive session.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gibbs? Anything else, board members? Dr. Mullins?
At the sacrifice of potentially being ridiculed by my, uh, by Mr. Susan, I do have one comment I would like to make, and it actually, uh, uh, on a serious note. It has been, it has been suggested to me that the information I provided the board and the community in a former board meeting related to our enrollment was inaccurate. Um, to include that this evening, and I know we normally do not respond to public comment, but I know my board knows that I take my word and my information to the board and the community seriously, and if I'm erroneous, I will correct myself, um, and take responsibility for that. I have, at the time that I provided the response, which was, have we had a decline in enrollment in our schools? My response was, no, our enrollment has continued to increase since the beginning of school. You heard from a staff member earlier this afternoon during our, believe our budget workshop, a second reference to our enrollment. I do not know if parents have withdrawn their students for any, any reasons. Uh, we know typically where they're intending to take their child because we code that in the system. But our enrollment has continued to increase. I, I verify that with staff periodically. We typically run an enrollment number every week. We have seen our enrollment grow since the beginning of the school year. There have been, I, you heard staff today, there have been some bumps, fluctuations, which is not necessarily uncommon for the district. So, I appreciate the moment to just clarify to the board and to the public that our enrollment has grown. If for some reason I find that that is an error, I will certainly correct it with the board and to, with the community. But certainly there was, um, I wanna take the opportunity before the evening closed, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And I would just repeat, for those of you who had comments about the, uh, public comment policy this evening, I would encourage you to go back and watch the discussion earlier. I think, um, Ms. Campbell did a, a phenomenal job kind of outlining, uh, all of the, the things that went into consideration and moving into that. And so, um, would encourage that you review that, uh, as we move forward. Um, and then lastly, I will just say, I believe Dr. Sullivan grabbed the individuals that